Gomez, are you in the audience? Mr. Gomez.
Mr. Chairman, I thought I saw him online.
There he is. Hey, Mr. Gomez, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please go ahead and unmute your mic, give us your name and address, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Yeah, my name is Fernando Gomez with Ambition Construction, uh, one, two, four, three, eight Slater Street in Oland Park, Kansas. And, uh, the project we're bringing tonight is, uh, a warehouse building for repairing of, uh, mowing equipment. The project owner owns a landscaping company, which has been working in Kansas City, Kansas for over twenty years. And he thinks that there is the need for this kind of a business. He's got the expertise and all the background to run this business. Uh, the lot where we're planning to build this building is a zone as a C three, which is a low impact commercial. And, uh, we believe that, uh, this, uh, location, uh, is feasible for this use. The only thing that we cannot accomplish because of the limitations of the size of the lot is to comply with the parking. Uh, for this kind of a project and the size of the building we're proposing, we are required to have a six parking, parking spaces. And, uh, we can provide, uh, at this point only two on the driveway. And with the potential of half inside the building, two more, which would be probably used for the owner of the business. So our request is for allowance on the remaining two parking spots. Uh, basically that's in general terms, what, uh, we're proposing and hopefully we can get it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you tell me how many parking spots you do have available?
We have two that are gonna be available on the driveway entering this, uh, workshop, and then, uh, we're gonna provide two inside the building. But those are basically to comply, uh, for the administration and owner of the business. So the six required includes everything visitors or people who operate the building. So basically we are like at two spots, uh, below what the requirement suggests.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, basically that's it. We are working with these same clients, uh, with a project across the street that I don't think is probably appropriate to bring it on, uh, at this point. That'll come probably one of the next meetings, but we are planning on having a more, um, pedestrian friendly in this area, which also is encompassed with the Armored Dale, uh, plan, which, uh, for this area specifies that they, they like to increase their pedestrian use and, uh, this, uh, uh, this other project is, uh, uh, designed in order to comply with those and, uh, we're gonna be providing a lot of open, uh, parking spaces, but, uh, I don't think I can use that yet as, uh, we're not presenting that project at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for members of the commission on this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand or if you're on, excuse me, raise your hand if you're online, if you're in the chambers, if you'd come up to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, we have a variance request before us for three different variances. Two of them related to setbacks, one for parking, as the applicant noted, our applicant's representative noted, this is related to a landscaping business. This is in the Armored Dale area plan. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are obviously, there are some older notices of violation on the property as it's currently vacant, which should be addressed by the proposed project. Um, staff does recommend approval of the setbacks and denial of the parking. Uh, we do have conditions of approval related to sidewalks on both Pennsylvania Avenue and 12th Street, uh, as well as some additional landscaping and commercial design guidelines that the building will follow before it can be constructed. Uh, I would just make a quick note to the new commissioners. Typically what we do for parking variances is note that a couple of years ago, the Unified Government had began a process to update its zoning code, completed a recommendation for parking, which created a new standard. So as a reference, that new standard would only have required four parking spaces instead of eight here. Um, staff is, uh, to the applicant's point, there are eight required spaces based on the size of the building. If two are provided on the driveway, uh, that's not necessarily a parking lot. So we noticed it as the full eight. And that's why your synopsis says that there's a zero provided and eight required. So there's not a parking lot. It's a driveway, um, for the business of important, what would be important to note is the setbacks, um, and the setback requirements in our zoning code are not designed for an urban neighborhood. They're designed for a greenfield development. So staff doesn't have problems with those, um, in terms of fitting it into the character of this neighborhood. In regards to parking, we did feel there were other ways they could have resolved the parking issue and did not. Uh, but the use of this specific business, not necessarily what a future business at this location may require, because the variance carries with the land, but this specific business doesn't really need parking. It's not for people to show up and have the public come in and things of that nature. So, uh, that is another point to balance in your decision-making process.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? So your recommendation is for approval of variance one and two and denial of the parking variance. Commissioner Jones?
Uh, Gunner, they indicate, I heard you say, well, I know there are other parking options, but did the petitioner indicate why they didn't pursue those options?
Not to my knowledge, not with staff. No, we thought that they could have gotten a parking agreement for the lot across the street. Um, redesign, we agree, would be tough on such a small self-constrained lot. Uh, however, there are a budding, um, land bank properties, uh, to the east northeast. Um, so that was another potential avenue, um, to get a larger piece of land to, to do the project and provide all the requirements. Um, staff has generally been pretty supportive of parking variances since in the past. We just felt like we could have explored other alternatives to not even need a parking variance before we got to this point.
Commissioner Jones?
Uh, Chairman Carson, I'd like to ask the petitioner why they didn't pursue the other parking options and make life easier for themselves at this point.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gomez, the question from Commissioner Jones is, uh, did you explore any other parking options, uh, to try to alleviate the need for the, uh, the request for variance?
Yeah, we actually spoke with the person who owns the property south of this location, trying to make a deal with them, but it was impossible to come to an agreement with them. Uh, as you can see in this, uh, drawing right now in display, it's pretty limited size for the lot and, uh, basically, right now we're using like a sixty percent of the entire lot area for the building. So it's basically not a lot of space and as Gunner said also, you know, the type of use is not the kind of business that you come and you park your day and you go and visit or spend some time doing something, basically just to drop whatever loan equipment you bring for repair. Basically like mowers and that kind of stuff. Uh, also on the east side of this property, we explored the potential to that, I believe that a piece of land was, uh, from the land bank. But by the time we tried to get it, uh, it seems like, uh, it was, uh, granted to somebody and actually the property owner, the project owner, uh, recently talked to me and he said that, uh, they were putting some markings on the property east of it. So that wasn't an option either. So, well, we tried to do that. Uh, the other, uh, comment that Gunner said about, you know, exploring the option of requesting for the variance to park across the street. Well, that's where we have that provided, but I didn't think that it was, uh, uh, something I could bring in today as we are still in the process of tuning it up to bring it to the board, probably within the next, uh, thirty to sixty days. Uh, that's a larger project which involves the entire block across Pennsylvania Avenue. So basically that's where we are right now. I don't know what the owner was, uh, wanted me to bring this project. Uh, first, I told him maybe probably it would make more sense to bring the large project, which includes the entire uh, block across the street, but, uh, I mean, I'm just trying to explore, you know, what the the board, uh, can decide on this one for now.
Well, if I'm understanding you correctly, one option became unavailable in the midst of you checking that out. And then in the other situation, um, yeah, I don't think you gave a reason for why, why the option didn't work out. I heard you say something about you talked to somebody, but I'm unclear on what you said with regards to why that didn't work out.
Yeah, but basically they couldn't negotiate. The person who owns that property south of it, uh, they own the bar, which is, uh, across, uh, 12th Street. And it seems like there's probably been some animosity between the, this, uh, project owner and the owner of, uh, that property. Uh, sometimes they park their, you know, guests or clients cars in that lot and they leave some, uh, cans and stuff like that on, on my client's property. So I don't think, uh, there was, uh, you know, possible negotiation. We tried, but, uh, it seemed like none of them wanted to give up anything. So that wasn't available either at this point.
And then the piece that you were saying about the larger project, were you mentioning that because, uh, it perhaps was gonna work out the parking issue? Once that comes to fruition?
Yeah, well, that project is, uh, involved the entire block and, uh, the idea is to be encompassed with, but the Armored Dale guidelines suggest, which is, uh, become more pedestrian, less car use. So we're, uh, on that one, we're proposing to have some, uh, outdoors, uh, off-street parking. And instead of, you know, uh, hardening the inside of the block and put a big, uh, piece of, uh, paving to park cars to create let-up park with trees and wider fountains and that kind of things. Uh, but, uh, that, uh, hasn't been presented to the board yet. So we have the project pretty much advanced and we could have brought it, but, you know, we started with this project, uh, six months before that one. So basically that's the reason why we didn't proceed with that one first.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Gunner, any clarification you need to provide with the entitlements running with the property? So, I mean, I think the, the applicant made a pretty good case for why we look at these parking variances pretty pretty, uh, deeply because of the fact there's already an issue with the property owner across the street and there's not even a business built there, but there's already a parking issue. So now we're looking at basically saying it's okay. So can you tell the new commissioners just real quick as far as the entitlements following the land? So if another business goes in there after this one?
Yeah, so, um, briefly, yeah, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. So generally speaking, uh, I apologize to everybody. We haven't had the chance to do a one-on-ones with the new commissioners yet. So we're doing a little bit on the fly here, but, um, generally speaking, all variances run with the property, which means that, uh, this business may get a parking variance, but the next business also has that parking variance. There are a couple of sections in our code that are an exception to that general rule, i.e. if a variance requires you to build something, you have to build that thing, uh, within six months to obtain that variance. You can't just sit on that, let's call it entitlement. Uh, but generally speaking, all variances run with the land.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? If not, I will stand for a motion when ready. Uh, Commissioner Beth has a question.
Yes, since this is brand new, Bill, is there, uh, any way that he can at least get some parking spaces?
So, um, here, I'll go to the
Since nothing's built there.
Yeah, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. We did explore a couple of design options with the applicant and based on their needs and their clients' needs. I think it didn't budge very much, to be honest with you. I think there were, there's been a couple tweaks, uh, based on what you see today from when it started with, with planning, uh, department's review, but the second various variance is the important one here. It's a setback for the parking, right? So you can't have a parking lot right up on your property line. It's gotta be a parking lot with a curb and a buffer and a landscaping and so on and so forth. So because it's such a constrained spot, variance two would allow them to basically use their driveway as two of the, of the, um, eight required. Um, again, we noticed it as a total of eight with zero provided to make sure that we were noticing the full potential of what this could be, because we knew it was a tight spot. We might be designing ourselves out of future parking spaces. So the variances, if adopted tonight, would allow not just to park them right there, but then you would negate the need to even use them as parking in the future. I think the issue we have here is we wanted them to basically get a parking agreement with a lot across the street, but they don't know what that use is yet. So they don't know what its parking requirement is and they don't know if they have surplus to provide them. If it's not the parcel across the street, they're gonna have to get a variance because it's gonna be outside of the two hundred and fifty feet required to be within the distance of your property to have that parking agreement. So it's kind of one way or the other.
Well, I, I agree with the, the, you know, we have to look at the long-term variance going with the property because if something else, if an auto repair place goes in there that needs parking or somebody puts something else in there, and even a small engine repair place, I can envision people are gonna be coming, dropping things off, parking there, unloading things and stuff and, and on-street parking and in Armored Dale is a serious problem anyway. A few of those places don't have, some of the houses don't even have places to park other than the street. So, uh, uh, yeah, I, I agree that variance is a, is an issue I, I think that we have to look at closely.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Jones?
So Gunner, do you think it would be worth anything that if, uh, we were to approve variance one and two, but for three, um, give the petitioner more time to get with staff and perhaps that could be worked out? And after, if one and two are approved, that would minimize the parking situation, correct, in terms of, uh, the problem?
Yeah, so by approving variance two, you effectively give them two of the required eight spots. You're saying that driveway can be considered a parking lot and you can fit two cars there. If you were to deny variance three, I do not see a design solution on such a constrained site other than reducing the size of the building, which I don't think they want to do or can do based on what they need that facility for. So a, a denial of a denial of variance three wouldn't be worth holding over. It would I don't see anything preventing the decision tonight. The results would be if you denied the parking variance, it would influence their project to the north because the only thing left, if they wanted to continue with the project, would be to have a parking agreement across the street. I mean, there might be some other variance in a parking lot farther away. Again, it's a slightly different conversation, but, um, as we understand it from the applicant, denying the parking variance is either gonna kill this project in totality or greatly, not greatly, or influence, um, the design of their project to the north of Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Not, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve Boza two zero two three dash zero four two based on staff stipulations and comments.
All three variances?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. The move, it's been moved to approve, uh, Boza case twenty twenty-three dash zero four two. Is there a second? Commissioner Jones? Can you go ahead and unmute, Commissioner Jones?
All right, I just want to be sure if we're approving three, that we make sure that it's in accordance with the stipulations, uh, that Gunner and staff have provided if we approved it.
Yes, please. All right, the motion is for, uh, including all the staff stipulations and comments. All right, is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
I'm moving to second it for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Beth.
Hi.
Easterwood.
Uh.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve variances one, two, and three in this application, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you. Thirty-three more cases left, folks. It took us twenty-five minutes to get through this one. So we'll be done by Thursday. I assure you.
Uh, do you want to go ahead and make the announcement? Cause it's like six-thirty now.
Yes, we have, well, we have five more minutes, but we have five more cases on the Board of Zoning Appeals and we will begin the City Planning Commission immediately following that after a five-minute break. So, um, just letting you know, we're apologize for the timing, but we do have a long agenda tonight all the way around. So thank you for your patience.
Our next appeal is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero four four, Daryl Palmer, for property at forty-two eleven Dodson Avenue. Does anyone on the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Palmer. Go ahead and give us your full name and address, please.
Daryl, Daryl Palmer, forty-two eleven Dodson Avenue, KCK.
Okay, tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, I got a twenty-four by thirty-two garage. I have a bunch of custom cars inside of it. I want to build a core carport outside so I can get my cars out of the garage to work on in my garage in storage.
So you want to build a carport or you want to build another garage?
No, I just want to build a carport in front of my garage.
And you need two variances to do that? Did not see any from the commissioners. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to, please come forward or if you're online, please raise your hand. Yes, sir. If you could go ahead and step aside, please, from the mic, let this gentleman speak. Please give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Charles Benjamin Gay Jr. I live at two five oh seven South Forty-second Street, where his driveway comes out, faces my house. And I'm totally in favor of his partition. At first I was worried about, uh, wind velocity coming from the south all the time, but the building, he's, where the, uh, carport he's putting up, uh, can actually withstand a hundred and forty mile per hour wind. So it's, uh, nothing to worry about.
Except the hundred and forty mile an hour winds.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
So I'm in favor of him.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else? You're not seeing anyone online. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Uh, as the applicant mentioned, again, we have a variance request for a third accessory structure. Um, this is in the, uh, it's R one zoning district. Yeah, that's right. R one zoning district, which only allows one accessory structure unless that second accessory structure was built before, I think it's nine, two thousand eight, I believe, is the, uh, code section. Um, so the second one is grandfathered in, the first one is allowed or vice versa perhaps. So we're talking about a third accessory structure and Unified Government carport isn't considered an accessory structure. So it does impact both the number and the cumulative size allowed. And in R one, it's a thousand square feet. So if approved altogether, it would need that second variance accordingly. This is in the, um, Plan KCK area in the Turner neighborhood. We've received no letters of support before this evening, no letters of opposition. Again, there's some older notices of violation, pretty, pretty older notices of violation that we noticed were quickly rectified, uh, all in relation to the applicant's, uh, propose, uh, use of his property for his collect, for his collector, uh, cart, um, uh, car collection, excuse me. Um, staff does, uh, recommend denial. We do have conditions of approval if need be.
All right, thank you. And what about the driveways? Something about the gravel must be covered, UG standards?
So the, in the R one district, um, or of, uh, we also allow it within, uh, R one district of a certain size. This is about a half acre lot, but, uh, for this specific, um, parcel, it should be an improved surface. So one of our conditions of approve, of, of approval, if approved, would be to, uh, have an improved surface. So no gravel driveway, no gravel, um, parking, parking area.
All right, thank you. And sir, you're, you're aware of the, the requirements that you would have to have a concrete driveway?
Or, or asphalt or pavers.
Right.
I got a suggestion, suggestion to bed.
All right. Any questions for Director Hand? Saying, I'm sorry, I got one here.
Just real quick, uh, Director Hand, how concerned would you be about the precedent that we set if this is approved?
Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design, um, I think the Board of Zoning Appeals have gone every way to Sunday on applications like this in the past. So, uh, I'm not sure there is a precedent-setting issue with this case.
What's the way around the variance to build another structure that satisfies both?
I believe staff, uh, hopefully communicated to you. I think the ideal situation for us would be to build a single accessory structure at a thousand square feet, which still doesn't get him what he wants, which is a cover over his cars when he pulls them out of the garage.
All right, thank you. Any other question for Director Hand? If not, I'll stand, uh, Commissioner Easterwood. Go ahead and then there you go.
Sorry. Uh, yes, what about the design of the, um, did you have any, uh, concern about the, the design of the carport of the?
Uh, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design, um, when the agency started accepting carports, um, as accessory structures, I think we, we accepted them as the, as the factory standard. So, um, there are no design guidelines that, uh, address those specifically. Um, ideally it should be matching the, uh, primary structure as much as possible. But in our code, it does allow accessory structures to be, uh, metal panel if it's integrally painted. So not a metal building that you paint, but the manufacturer paints that, uh, metal and that's how it comes. That just makes it a little bit longer, reduces rust, things of that nature. So we, that is acceptable in the code.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Uh, I make a motion to approve Boza two zero two three dash zero four four, uh, both variances, but subject to the staff stipulations and comments.
Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward for Boza case twenty twenty-three dash zero four four, subject to all staff stipulations and comments. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Beth. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Easterwood.
Uh.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you.
Our next application is BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, Artie Schalles with four oh three club for property at six fourteen Reynolds. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Scholes, go ahead and give us your name and address. Please tell us what you want to do.
My name is Artie Schalles. My address is five two five North Thompson. And I'd like to continue operating how I have for twelve years. Um, it was brought up in my first special use permit application that, uh, there is this one AM uh, variance for anyone who has a parking lot within a hundred feet of a residence, uh, versus the two AM that the state grants you to be able to serve people to, um. That was taken off the table by the commissioners in my first special use permit. I have since, uh, renewed my five-year special use permit and was granted permission, but there is still this, uh, stipulation of a one AM closure because I have a parking lot. And I'd like to appeal that and get permission to stay open until two AM. Should we ever start to enforce, uh, the closure laws, uh, I want to be able to say I'm within my rights to stay open until two AM.
And what about your other variances?
Uh, the other variances for the welcome strawberry hill sign I have on the side of my building. Uh, I was made aware in my last, um, in my special use permit that I needed a permit for that sign. And come to find out, I actually need a variance to even have two signs. I have a small sign on the front of my building that says four oh three club. And apparently I need a variance just to have a second sign altogether. So I am asking that you grant me permission to have that second sign, and it's been existing there since I bought the building in two thousand fourteen. I put it up. I have received no notice of any violation, so. It is apparently also twenty-four square feet too big. So I'd like to ask that you grant that I can have the whole hundred and seventy-four square feet.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case, please come forward if you're in the chambers or raise your hand online. The first person I've got to speak is Anna Cole. Hannah, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Hannah Cole. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on to Rose. Rose, I need you to go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Give us your name and address.
Hi, this is Rose Isles, and I wanted to speak in support of all three of the variances for the four oh three club. Artie's been a great business person and a great neighbor for many, many years, and I don't think that giving him these variances will do anything to detract from the neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go back to Anna Cole. She's dropped off. What about Ashley Meek?
I just would like to second everything that Rose said.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir. If you want to speak, come up to the mic. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Alonso. I live at five oh seven North Thompson. I'm a neighbor and friend of Artie's and one of his customers, and the bar is a good neighbor. It's also a center for the pinball community. There's a lot of tournaments and stuff that's becoming part of the entertainment district that's building up on Sixth Street. He's pretty conscientious. He's pretty generous. He's supported my group Equality Kansas in fundraisers. And I think that there, there's got to be some room for some compromise here to help him out because he's got a good business going. It's really good for the neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Come forward, and I'm going to try one more time for Anna Cole. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I want to speak in favor of all three variances for Artie Schalles. I believe I was his very first bartender of all locations twelve years ago, and as such, I'm a hill, which I'm a resident and property owner in, you know, as we're experiencing this, this sort of renaissance of sorts. I feel that Artie has been, was at the forefront of that. He's, he's always run a tight ship, always. He does, as you're witnessing tonight, he does things the correct way, which, you know, is sometimes hard to do in a very hard business. He's managed to never have any real issues. I live about a block away from the new place or new-ish place. And I do feel that he's kind of been at a disadvantage simply for wanting to play by the rules. So I hope to see all three variances passed in our favor today. Thank you.
Okay, I also need you to state your address, please, for the record, please, Ms. Cole.
I, I live near Holy Family, so.
Okay.
It's one oh one.
Okay, anyone else? Hey, seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Design. Again, we have three variances for the four oh three club, one for hours of operation, and then two regarding the sign. This is in the central area plan. We've received letters in support ahead of what we heard this evening, no opposition. There had been some NOVs related to the signage that brought this up a little bit, brought this case forward when Mr. Schultz was going through his special use permit renewal. You know, standard number of police calls for a business of this, of this type. Steph does recommend denial of all three as they're all self-imposed hardships. The sign is here. They're asking for forgiveness. They're operating to two. I will note for the hours of operation, when the first time the SUP went through and it got to the Board of Commissioners, it was a last second condition of approval at that Board of Commissioners meeting that allowed them to work, operate till two. That was basically the Board of Commissioners operating as the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is not allowed. So this is a correction more than it is a recommendation of denial. And for the other two, the only point I would make and relates to the sign is we do not, because of a Supreme Court rule, we cannot determine the content of the sign. That's a, that's a freedom of speech issue. But the point I would make is if approved, that sign would be there in perpetuity, and tomorrow it could say something else. So that's the only point I would make.
All right, thank you. And as far as clarification on the time, the, the typical time that is approved for businesses in this type of neighborhood setting is one o'clock?
For.
I'm sorry, just clarify the timing.
Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Design, for C one zone with this proximity to the R one zone district, it has to close at one.
All right, thank you.
All the other bars are not zone C one on Sixth Street. That's why he's at the exception.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. I'm sorry, Commissioner Easterwood.
Sorry, just a quick question. So are all the other bars on Sixth Street open until two now?
All right, Director Plan and Design, I believe so, and very many of them don't have parking lots either. Or again, R one zone C one, so. I'll just say this really quick. I agree with what the, many of the people in the public said. Mr. Schultz has been a very easy applicant to work with. He's very reasonable, and we appreciate his efforts.
Anything else, Commissioner Easterwood?
Uh, no, sir. I would just make a motion for approval of the variances requested.
All right, motion made for approval of all three variances by Commissioner Easterwood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair, that would include all the conditions of approval?
Yes.
All right, including all stipulations, staff stipulations and comments in the report. Is seconded by Commissioner Ward. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve variances one, two, and three, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor, none opposed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Our next application is BOZA two zero two three dash zero five two. Cheryl Smith for property at twenty-three oh five Steel Road. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Smith.
Hello.
Hi, go ahead and give us your name and address, please. Tell us what you want to do.
My name is Cheryl Smith. My address is twenty-six twenty-three North Eighty-second Terrace, but I'm speaking for my parents, Charles and Carol Preston. They are here. Their address is twenty-three oh five Steel Road, Kansas City, Kansas. They had a fire in March of two thousand twenty-three, and we are trying to eventually get permits to fix their garage. But we need five variances for I guess violations on the property. And do I need to say the variances or what do I?
Well, we've got the variance in front of us. Can you comment on the, the violations? And I mean, there's, in reviewing the photographs, the property got a lot going on out there.
Yep.
So can you comment on why we got a lot going on on there and none of it's been permitted? I mean, the, the fire kind of has brought all this to everybody's attention.
Correct. I, I don't. I haven't lived there for long time. My father has a lot of antiques and antique motorcycles and those types of things, and he needed a room, and so things got added on.
Which were not permitted, correct?
Correct.
And what about the debris and everything else that surrounds the property? Just about the photos, the just for choice of a good word, debris.
So I know in one of the pictures, there's firewood.
I see metal. It looks like I see old gutters. I see stuff leaning up against the walls. I see ladders. I see, it looks like barrels and some containers. I see a tarp over some other material.
So some of this stuff is outside because the garage, we had to take stuff out of, or heat, my father took stuff out of the garage because of the fire. There is still tarps on top of the building. They've been up there for almost a year now. And stuff inside is still continuing to get wet and even though there's tarps over the top, but that's part of that stuff. There's there's a thing there for the back of their pickup. On the right side, there's, that's firewood.
I guess we can kind of cut through it. Is, is all this going to be cleaned up?
Yes.
All right. Anything else you want to add about what, what is being asked for and the reason it's being asked?
I guess on one of the items, it says now I lost the page, that we need to put curb cuts. I'm not sure what curb cuts are in for existing or future driveway, and I think that we're probably talking about the back end. And there's, it's a the entrance to get into the back is a gravel driveway. So I'm not sure what a curb cut is and what that is.
Well, we'll get you some, we'll get you some answers to that when we go through the staff report. Anything else you want to add before we start asking questions? All right, any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, please come forward. If you're in the chambers, if you're online, raise your hand. Seeing no one, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Design. Again, we have multiple variances regarding this property for number of accessory structures, setbacks, total square footage, and percent of yard occupied by said accessory structures. These are all self-imposed hardships. Again, the applicant noted that it was brought to our attention last spring when there was a fire in one of those accessory structures. This is in the Plan KCK conference of plan area in the Turner. Right at the Turner Argentine-ish, I think Steel Road is actually the split between Turner Argentine and some people's opinion neighborhood. We received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. This property does have a history of notices of violation. We have gone through both old photos, as you can see, some of them here from the applicant, as well as the timeline the best available data we have from old aerials of the low and steady growth of this backyard and their accessory structures. You can see there basically the accessory structure is essentially the same size of the house by the end of all of this. To answer the applicant's question, UG curb cuts is a standard condition that we use, essentially whether it be on, in your case, it would be off Steel Road, and you do have concrete apron leading up to your looks like asphalt driveway, so we'd have to, so that does meet the code. We put it in there just in case there's any other future curb cuts or other things that happened through the resolution of said, said issue. Staff recommends denial.
Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for motion.
Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Design, we do have conditions of approval if need be.
All right. And I would imagine they're lengthy, given the condition of the property?
Yeah, there's some standard ones as noted previously. Other ones were to address all the property management, property maintenance compliance issues. That's about it.
If the, if the appeal's denied, what has to happen to, everything, it has to get cleaned up?
Basically, all of those buildings need to be taken back to nineteen ninety-seven levels, so most of them would have to be demolished.
All right.
Similar to the previous case, our recommendation is figure out a way to consolidate it into a thousand square feet new building.
All right. Any questions or clarifications to Director Hand? If not, I'll seek a motion. Got a long night ahead of us, folks. Anyone? Anyone? Bueller? Bueller? Any clarifications needed so we can move on to a motion?
I guess I'll ask a question then. So if this gets denied, then these people have to tear down all of these buildings that have been on their property for years.
That were unpermitted.
That are unpermitted, but they have to tear them down, and then
Correct.
They this dirt's supposed to dispose of all of these items too, right? But there's also
Or build a new building consolidate. A new
A permitted building, so it's probably, I mean, I guess I'm new to this, so how much do we think that this is going to cost them?
That we don't really
Twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars.
We don't get into the cost like that for shorts.
Mr. Chairman, can you tell me who was just speaking, please?
That was Commissioner Schwartz.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess. What are the staff stipulations? Just consolidate everything down to a thousand square foot building?
Well.
No, I think Steph's recommendation for cases like Gunner Hand, Director Plan and Design, Steph's recommendation for cases like this is to meet the code, which allows one single accessory structure, no more than a thousand square feet. So we always try to encourage folks to figure out a way to either consolidate or get it in there or store their stuff somewhere else offsite.
Thank you.
Started in two thousand eight.
Correct.
There are some grandfather access
You're done. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Other questions or clarifications? If not, I'm ready for a motion. Mr. Jones?
Based on not a lot of options here, motion to deny the commissioner's request based on the fact that it doesn't meet code.
All right, motion made for denial from Commissioner Jones. Is there a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Sadly, yes.
All right, thank you. Motion is made for denial by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
And Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to deny this application, and the five appeals passes six in favor to oppose for the reasons outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you.
Our next application is BOZA two zero two three dash zero five four. Ariel Borough with Insight Design Studio for property at one three zero two one Leavenworth Road. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Is there we go. I'm sorry, the applicant is, hello, Ms. Borough?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi. Yes, my name is Ariel Pisembero. I filed an application on behalf of the Piper School District in which we are currently under construction on their new high school addition located at the address that had previously been said. The variances that we are appealing for today are for signage that is going to be located on the south end of the building, which faces the, what we call the South Athletics, which is currently in for a PDP. So it will be under review, not in this month's planning commission meeting, but next month's. This project began a handful of years ago with the creation of Piper Creek Elementary, which is their three through five building. It was already always meant as a sort of holdover as the district has continued to see increased growth in their student population. So in twenty twenty-two, the school district passed a bond to be able to continue the work that they had began in their previous bond and they, we are building a hundred and roughly a hundred and ten thousand square foot addition to the south end of the Piper Creek building to make this the new Piper High School this fall, twenty twenty twenty-four. So our two variants appeals for tonight again relate to the signage at the south end of the building. The first is to increase the maximum sign area as the stipulations are kind of laid out there. And then the second variance refers to the signage height. This is something that, you know, I want to thank the staff that we've had conversations with so far that they've been willing to work with us so that we can understand the spirit of your raises code, but then also understand that you know, we're not always building a high school in an ag or residential neighborhood. And so sometimes there are instances like this that a hot two hundred plus thousand square foot building, the signage scale is going to sometimes deviate from the minimums and maximums allowed within those areas of ag and residential. So our request tonight would be to grant both the maximum sign area allotment and then also to grant the change in sign height. I don't know if we have any images we can see for the signage height, but the major factor of the signage height is that we're orienting our letters vertically instead of horizontally. So the overall vertical height of the entirety of the word is what is shown in that twenty-eight foot vertical distance. Or sorry, thirty-two foot.
Okay. Anything else?
I believe that is it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
I mean, is, do we not have signs anywhere else on the property? It's a school. It's not a business.
Correct. We have a sign at the front side of the building that says Piper on the front. It's located right near the main entry canopy. There is also a marquee sign on Leavenworth Road for the property itself.
Okay. So I'm curious why. I mean, if you already got two signs.
So the south end of the property where we are creating a new or rather an additional main entry point for the building. We know that with high schools, as they continue to grow, they will typically have multiple entry points throughout their campus. Currently with the student population, we anticipate that the current primary entry off of Leavenworth Road will continue to function as the primary student entry point for both arrival and dismissal. But we do anticipate that the new south entry we are creating will become a secondary main entry point as the student population continues to grow, which we are still already seeing that even throughout the design process that more students are continuing to come into the school district. In addition to that, the south entry will also serve as the primary entry point for their performing arts section. So the theater space, which is part of the new construction, is located towards the south end of the building as well as all the site athletics and another entry point for interior athletic functions with their new competition gyms.
All right. Any other questions?
Question.
Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, you're talking about the south entrance. Does that face the residential area there or what's on the south side of that?
Yep. So the Yep. So the south portion of the site is primarily athletics. We do have two neighbors to they're almost like inset on our property, but they're not within our property. They're to the western portion, but they are set back a fair distance from where this building is actually located. They're going to be much closer to the fields and not necessarily our building itself. There are also neighbors to the east that would have some visibility of this sign, but the sign faces south and any neighbors are located to the east and the west.
There, there's none between the where the new school is and parallel? No residential area there?
I believe it's ag, there might be some properties far south. I'm sorry, I can't recall off the top of my head. But there, I mean, our site is seventy-two acres. There's quite a bit of distance before any neighbors to the south could potentially see the sign.
Is it going to be a lighted sign?
We do, we would like for it to be halo lit. There were some staff stipulations about the hours in which that would be lit that we would comply with.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Easterwood. Yes, Easterwood.
Yes, are the, is the athletic field going to have lighting?
Yes, the athletic fields will have lighting. We included just the photometrics for the signage itself, but we understand that with the PDP and the FDP that photometrics for the entirety of the site will be given at that point.
So in comparison to the, the lighting of the sign, the athletic field would probably be more than the sign?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to address this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Planter resign. Again, we have a sign space and sign variance request for the new Piper High School signage. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are some those old notices of violation on the property from it being undeveloped, all which would be addressed by the proposed project here in the ball, in the ball fields accordingly. As you can see, as was noted a little earlier by the applicant, so there's these two residences that are on the south side of the proposed development. All the ball fields will essentially be down here. Again, that case will also be heard later this evening by the City Planning Commission. And then we're talking about the subdivision to the east there accordingly. So staff recommends approval of the sign area, but denial of the height. And there's a small nuance in there. Essentially, this is a design decision by the designers and it does not meet code. And they wanted to go vertical. Now, if this was a horizontal sign, I think staff would be less concerned, but that's somewhat subjective because it would just be more proportional if it was the traditional horizontal signage, not too dissimilar from what's on the front of the building. It says pirate, right? This one says pirates. And so because it is the entire, essentially the entire height of the whole building minus that front first, first floor, we thought there was a bit of an issue. Our conditions of approval, if need be, for variance number two, but also associated with variance number one are basically to time the lighting to, to halo light it. And halo lighting is basically you backlight it so it looks like the letters are floating, which is a little less intrusive, I would say, than other forms of lighting, be it uplighting or illuminate the channels of the actual letters themselves. So that was our mitigation measure for the adjacent property owners. Again, to, to your point, Mr. Bet, when we review the, when we review the site plan for the ball field expansion, light is also an issue with that case. So I would reserve my comments for that case in a little bit in the future here.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Mr. Jones?
Motion to approve that the petitioner's request, subject to all staff stipulations and comments.
Variance is one and two.
For one and two, yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion made for approval of variances one and two on Boza Case twenty twenty-three dash fifty-four. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Nice. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Nay.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Nay.
Jones?
Aye.
Moller?
No.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I've got a four to four vote here.
All right. I vote aye.
That motion to approve variances one and two passes five in favor and four opposed.
All right. Thank you.
And that would be subject to the conditions in the staff report.
That is correct.
Okay. That takes us to our last application on the Board of Zoning Appeals, but not our last item. BOZA twenty twenty-three dash zero five seven. Amy Grant with Pulse in LA PC for property at ninety twenty State Avenue. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, is that you?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Kurt Peterson, nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Kansas City, Missouri. The request is for two variances to allow a high quality halo lit building signage for the sixty million dollar, one hundred and sixty-two thousand square foot home field training facility that will open this spring over on State, State Avenue. Variance one is for a larger sign area. Variance two is for a taller sign. Quick context substantive, then quick context procedural. The substantive context is if Ms. Parker wants to advance the slide, the home field training facility is part of a sixty million dollar, is a sixty million dollar piece, I should say, of a half billion dollar master development focused on entertainment and tourism and sports. Again, State Avenue east of four thirty-five. Both the Unified Government and the state of Kansas are heavily invested in this master development and its vision for excellence, including, for example, what you see on the screen. That is now, that's a complete product. That is not a vision from some other state that exists over just east of the facility that we're talking about here today. This thirty-five million dollar all turf tournament baseball field is now constructed and ready for opening day here in about six weeks for tournaments, drawing kids from across the country. The next slide is a photo of the Margaret Ville has resort. If you look in the upper left, that's a hundred and seventy million dollar resort along with home field outdoor that's associated with it that is now underway in terms of construction will be open in two thousand twenty-five. And then lastly, you have some images of the home field training facility, which is the subject matter before you today. Again, this is a hundred and sixty-two thousand feet of athletic training focused on youth and is set to open here this spring. That's the big picture in a nutshell to give substantive context to the variance that's before you today. Now, the procedural context is that the underlying zoning for this training facility is agricultural. In twenty twenty-two, the Board of County Commissioners approved an indefinite, as in forever, SUP for the training facility so it could exist on the site along with an outdoor turf field associated with it. When the project team submitted our sign permit request at the end of last year for a monument sign in a building signage, staff rejected the sign permit application because it didn't comply with the underlying ag zoning, wherever we have a special use permit that provides for the commercial use. We then had to make a choice. Do we rezone, go all the way back, even though we're getting near the end of construction, trying to open it? Do we rezone the site to CP two? Because CP two underlying zoning allows you to do the signage we want. Or do we ask that this board, Board of Zoning Appeals, for a variance which this board can provide and move forward with the requested signage? So we worked with staff as we always do, and we appreciate that. The staff encouraged us to go to the BZA route rather than go back through and do an entirely new rezoning. So that's what we did, and that's why we're here. So it's, and very for, and very important for this project to seek and receive the sign variance at this point to allow the sign to be ordered and installed in time for the grand opening of this great facility this spring. So we'd ask the board for approval of these two sign variances. And again, a very fast treatment, but I don't do that to be disrespectful. I do that because you will slow me down, especially the chairman, and ask me questions if you have any need for that on any of these criteria. So quick treatment for the record. Criteria five, and I'm doing it out of order on purpose of the five criteria that y'all look at when you decide variances. Criteria five is, is this within the spirit and ten of the zoning ordinance? This is the most important criterion, I, I believe, which is why I'm starting here. The spirit of the sign ordinance rules for ag zoning is that the sign isn't put in place that takes kind of everything out of context for what ag is. But here, the Board of County Commissioners already approved a forever special use permit on top of ag, which they're allowed to do, and changed the master plan for this property to reflect entertainment. And again, approve the, the SUP for the training facility. So there's nothing here in this request to you about signage that cuts against the spirit of what the county commission approved for the land use for this property. In fact, submitting this high-end halo lit building sign package request fits the scale of the approved facility and would be both expected and natural to the commission based on what they already approved in the SUP. That's the most important, I think, the spirit of this whole thing. Criteria number five. Let's next quickly, quickly look at criteria, criteria two and criteria four together. These are the two that talk about affecting neighbors and the general welfare and how this request interrelates with those two criteria. These are both really important always because it's how does it affect the public? The good news here is staff agrees that there's really no negative implication on what we're asking for the public. So we can dispense with those. So we've done five, the spirit. We, in criteria two and four, there's nothing that harms the public at all. So we end with the last two criteria you're to look at. Criteria one is the condition that says, is this unique and is it created by the applicant? So in the uniqueness, this is clearly a special, special use sports facility, never seen before in Wyandotte County for sixty million dollars in capital investment and a focus exclusively on youth sports and tourism, bringing people into our area to spend their hard earned dollars. So coupled with the fact that the master plan and the indefinite SUP support a commercial project that falls that, and this follows the appropriate commercial sort of signage you'd expect and that there's no harm to the public. When you put all of that together, it's pretty unique. That's pretty different. Nothing exactly like that before in Kansas City, Kansas. It's a unique circumstance. The second half of that criteria says, did the applicant create the circumstance? We would say no. The cause for this circumstance is a sign code that doesn't contemplate the BOCC approving a master plan amendment to entertainment and then approving a permanent forever SUP for commercial use when there's underlying ag zoning. I mean, it kind of makes your head spin, but never was contemplated. Of course, the Board of County Commissioners would want appropriate commercial signage for this. That's what they intended. That's a weird situation that is created by a, you'd almost say a loophole or a nuance or a hole in the code. Finally, Chairman, criteria three. This says, is denying the variance going to create an unnecessary hardship for the project? Again, this is sixty million dollar project in KCK for a facility that's built both to serve our youth here in the community, but also bring lots of people in to spend a lot of money for our benefit. That is the community's benefit, sales tax. And having this high quality and appropriately sized signage to reflect the excellence of this building, of this project, denying that would definitely be a hardship for this project. It would definitely set it back. So we'd respectfully request, based on the consideration of these five, five criteria, as well as the overall kind of macro context here that I started with, we'd ask for your, respectfully for your support.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Peterson? Not seeing any. We will go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition of the request? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone if you're in the chambers. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Planter resign. Again, we have another sign variance, two sign variances in front of us for sign face and height. As that, and this is for the Home Field Training Center. This is a Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are some older notices of violation on the property before it was developed or while it was vacant. We received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are some older notes of ventilation on the property before it was developed, um, or while it was vacant, which are getting, uh, addressed by the. Uh, ongoing construction currently. Staff does recommend denial. Um, we do have conditions of approval, um, if need be. Uh, the only point staff would make is that this, this sign package did include a monument sign on State Avenue.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, um, sorry, Commissioner Jones.
That's okay. Director Hand, you, I'm curious as to whether you agree with, uh, Mr. Peterson's, uh, assessment of the criteria.
Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resign, um. I think to answer that question, there's a broader answer, which is. I mean, variances are supposed to be hard to get. Um, there's a high bar with this specific case to the applicant's point. Probably should have done a change zone originally and the SUP. Um, this Board of Zoning Appeals have approved other variances for signage that were zoned one thing and. Were here all C3. This is a, this is a commercial property on our main commercial corridor, State Avenue. This just happens to be zoned AG.
Anything else, Commissioner Jones?
I missed that last part, Gunner, that happens to be what now?
It just happens to be zoned agricultural.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve Boza 2023-057, uh, both variances, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion is for approval of both variances in accordance with staff stipulations and comments made by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Okay, that does conclude.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We do have one other matter. We need to elect a chairman for the Board of Zoning Appeals and a vice chairman.
Correct.
So. Any nominations?
Make a nomination, sir.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
I move to continue your presidency or chairmanship of the Board of Zoning Appeals, sir.
All right. Are there any other nominations, Commissioner Ernst?
No, I was seconding his.
Thank you. I don't know why you're making me blush, but I am. No, are there any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That was an opposition, Commissioner Armstrong?
No, that was me saying aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, and we need a vice chairman.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I nominate Ms. Jones to continue her vice presidency.
Commissioner Jones, you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Uh, any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not even gonna ask for any opposed because I don't care. All right. So, Commissioner Jones, you're the vice chair. We will, this now does conclude the Board of Zoning Appeals. We will take a five minute recess and we'll come back. We'll get onto that planning commission meeting. And we'll get you out of here as soon as possible, folks. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Janet, are you ready?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, thank you. Okay, folks, we're gonna go ahead and call the February twelfth meeting of the City Planning Commission to order. My name is Jeff Carson. I am serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. Karen Jones is serving as the Vice Chair. Make a couple of introductions as we get started. Gunner Hand, the Director of Urban Plan, Urban, excuse me, Planning and Urban Design, is with us tonight here in the chambers along with Jeff Conway, the Unified Government Legal Counsel. We have the following Commissioners present in the chambers, Dwayne Beth and Aaron Ward. Online, we have the following Commissioners, again, Vice Chairman Karen Jones, Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner Mark Muller, and again, I would like to introduce new Commissioners Beverly Easterwood and Mary Beth Schwartz. Welcome to both of you to your first City Planning Commission meeting. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Janet Parker, who serves as this Administrative Assistant to the Urban Planning and Design Department, and she will read the opening statement of how we'll run the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the Commission Chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background. Planning Commission members attending by Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in person in the Commission Chamber, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the Raise Your Hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The Chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the front of the room to the microphone when the application is called, and the Chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, February twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four. For final Platts and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission may, by two-thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The Chairman will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the Commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@yco-kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the Consent Agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the Consent Agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The Consent Agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at seven P M. The Planning Commission will also have a Consent Agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The Consent Agenda is the first part of the agenda, and items on the Consent Agenda are final Platts, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the Consent Agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the Consent Agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the Consent Agenda, and when I have completed the list, the Chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the Raise Your Hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the Consent Agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you are in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the item you wish to remove from the Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission Agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the Commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision on Thursday, February twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four at seven P M. I will now read the items on the Consent Agenda. Consideration of the December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission Minutes. Special Use Permit Application, S P two thousand and twenty-three dash one-one-zero, Pick and Pull. Renewal of a Special Use Permit, S P twenty-eighteen dash ninety-four, which expired on January ten, two thousand and twenty-four, to operate an automobile salvage yard at eleven forty-two South Twelve Street. Special Use Permit Application, S P two thousand and twenty-three dash one-one-one, Ryan Forshee with Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas. Renewal of a Special Use Permit, S P two thousand and twenty-one dash zero-eight-two, which expired February three, two thousand and twenty-four, to operate a group dwelling unit at twenty-six oh one Ridge Avenue. Platt Application, Platt two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-three-six, Rob Young with R L Buford and Associates. Final Platt to adjust the property line between a church and a single-family residence at five thirty-nine Greeley Avenue and five thirty Quandero Boulevard. And then we have a Platt and a Plan Review that go together. Platt two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-three-seven, Curtis Peterson with Pulsonelli. Final Platt, Home Field Atlas Nine, to create one commercial parcel and vacate a portion of right-of-way to develop the Atlas Nine Interactive Exhibit Center at ninety-seven hundred State Avenue. And it corresponds with Plan Review, P R two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-three-eight. Plan Review Application, P R two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-four-one, CMS Group. Final Development Plan for the Conversion and Remodel of a Drive-Thru Restaurant at one zero nine three zero Parallel Parkway. Plan Review Application, P R two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-four-two, Jacob Dobbs with Call Valley Engineering. Final Plan Review for the Conversion of a Church into a Multi-Family Dwelling at twenty-five oh eight North Twelve Street. The items I have just read are on the Consent Agenda. At this time, does any member of the Commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Thank you. Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the Consent Agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February twelve, two thousand and twenty-four, the application, other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the publication in the Echo for the special use permits, and the notices to property owners. The Commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Members of the Commissioners, is there anything that you want to have removed from the Consent Agenda for special consideration? All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience want anything removed from the Consent Agenda for consideration? Yes, sir.
Fred Sroy from the Brian Cave Law Firm on behalf of Pick and Pull.
Okay, so you'd like to have S P two thousand and twenty-three dash zero, I'm sorry, S P two thousand and twenty-three dash one-ten pulled?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the remaining items on the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the remaining items on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Jones to approve the remaining items on the Consent Agenda. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before I take roll call, I apologize. We have the two new members, and they're not aware how the Planning Commission votes, but um, each month, the person that votes first changes. It goes in alphabetical order, and I just wanted to say that because unfortunately for Commissioner Schwartz, she's up first to vote tonight, so I kind of wanted to explain that. So the motion is for approval of the remaining items on the Consent Agenda, subject to the conditions in the staff reports. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Um.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes. Eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Janet.
And now, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna go back to the item that was removed from the Consent Agenda for public hearing. It's Special Use Permit, S P two thousand and twenty-three dash one-ten, for Pick and Pull. Renewal of a Special Use Permit to operate an automobile salvage yard at eleven forty-two South Twelve Street.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, once again, your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Fred Sroy. That's Fred. And S G R O I. I'm a lawyer from the Brian Cave Law Firm located in downtown Kansas City.
All right, thank you. And you're representing Pick and Pull. Go ahead and tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, what we'd like to do is, as the agenda shows, this is an application for a renewal of the Special Use Permit for this automobile salvage yard and associated retail sales operation on property along South Twelve Street, a heavy industrial district. It's been the same use for all of the twenty-first century, since at least two thousand. And we're just looking to maintain the status quo, but we urge the City Planning Commission to recommend approval of the petition without imposing Conditions One, Two, and Three from the staff recommendations, which require public improvement, construction of sidewalks, repair of curbs and guttering, and landscaping within the public right-of-way. We're not objecting to anything on the property, but it seems that these would be extraordinary, and we submit unreasonable conditions to impose on the renewal of a special use permit. Nothing is changing. And it seems as if what is happening here is that client is being asked to fund public improvements as price of admission, if you will, to continue operating. In in some respects, it seems staff may be viewing this petition as seeking something that it's not. For example, if you look at page four of the staff report, it states that the proposed use will, quote, inherently result in an increase in traffic. Now, we haven't seen any studies or other factual support for that, and it seems inconsistent with the facts on the ground, if you will. There will be no changes to the use. So there shouldn't be any change in the traffic associated with the use. Again, this is a renewal, not a new development or use that we're we're seeking. I can go through each of these three conditions, but, I mean, fundamentally, we disagree with the notion that we should be required to construct a concrete sidewalk spanning the length of the property and connecting to a sidewalk, quote, on the Twelve Street Bridge. As support for this, staff points to the Go Dot Mobility Plan identifying South Twelve Street as a priority sidewalk connection. It's not clear to us how the existence of that plan justifies shifting the cost of constructing that sidewalk, which would extend northward along the length of the property and stop at railroad tracks in a heavy industrial district, nor how that proposed sidewalk even serves the goals of that plan. Heavy industrial areas do not tend to attract pedestrians, and the sidewalk would not lead to schools or parks or other similar destinations. Similarly, Condition Two is to repair curbs and guttering. And again, it's not clear to us how, why that would be properly shifted to a private owner or operator that simply wants to continue its previously approved use. There's nothing showing that the use that Pick and Pull seeks to continue hastened the deterioration of those curbs or guttering. In fact, parts of the curb is near a Corps of Engineers easement, and that would be subject to being damaged by heavy equipment sometimes used by the Corps. And indeed, there was heavy equipment on that easement Friday afternoon. Similarly, Condition Three is just a request for landscaping, but again, landscaping outside of the property owned by, owned and operated by Pick and Pull. The other conditions are all acceptable. The barbed wire condition initially threw our client, some of the barbed wire faces outward on this property and did at the time that Pick and Pull first came onto the property. And that is perhaps good for deterring thieves, but it is also in violation of ordinance, and so it's hard to object to that condition. And then there is a condition about parking in the right-of-way, which of course is acceptable to Pick and Pull. They don't want cars parking in the right-of-way at at the property, near the property, rather. And Pick and Pull's position is this should be enforced by the city, by ordinary parking control. There's, you know, they're not encouraging parking in the right-of-way. And interestingly, this condition seems to reflect a recognition that its use is to be limited to on the property, which is consistent with what seems to be a fundamental disagreement between Pick and Pull and the and the planning staff with respect to responsibility for public improvements in connection with this petition. The remaining conditions all seem to be pretty standard. There are timing-related conditions that are outlined in the report do not reflect communications that I've seen between Pick and Pull and the planning staff about allowing Pick and Pull to continue to operate despite the fact that its permit expired on the tenth of last month. This matter initially was set to be considered on the eighth. And I understand there might have been a postponement due to weather of that, so. Um, also, staff has indicated that certain conditions could be met in phases, and while Pick and Pull does not believe that they should be imposed at all, if they are after, you know, review and any appeals, the nature of them would suggest strongly that a phased approach would be necessary. Some of these are are pretty significant projects. Preliminary analysis of the expense of these staff-recommended conditions has indicated that it would be approximately three hundred thousand dollars. It's very preliminary. Over ninety percent of that expense would be for the disputed public improvements. I'll note that there are other mechanisms for funding public improvements, which would seem to be more appropriate for sidewalk construction and the like. For example, a community improvement district for the entire district would seem to be appropriate as opposed to placing conditions on just one owner-operator's S U P. Seems such mechanisms could be more efficient. You don't have to wait for renewals to address the needs of the city. And so you avoid having to address necessary improvements parcel by parcel. And it also just seems more fair to do it for the entire district at one time and make an appropriate assessment. So again, Pick and Pull urges that you recommend approval of their petition without Conditions One, Two, and Three.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? How long has Pick and Pull been at this location?
Of since, I believe, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay.
It's a, uh, it's a ten-year lease from the prior operator.
Okay.
It's how they're operating today.
But it was a, previously it was a salvage yard?
Salvage yard, and the pre, and the owner previously operated it. Pick and Pull came in and took over the operation under a long-term lease.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Easterwood, question?
Yes, what is the term of the special use permit being requested?
Uh, what is the term of the special use being, special use permit being requested? How how long is it, Gunner?
Staff's recommendation is for five years.
Five years, Commissioner Easterwood.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're on. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design. Again, we have a special use permit for an auto salvage auto salvage yard. The Pick and Pull, as the applicant's representative noted, this would be their fifth approval, fourth renewal. Um, staff would just make the point that although all these, a lot of these special use permits aren't described as renewals, these are brand-new entitlements. They're new case numbers, the new hearings. Um, we understand that some of these carry over for use and are allowed in the code to be built to be carried over in place, but this is a brand-new entitlement that the applicant's requesting. What has happened since the last time that this was approved was the Go Dot Countywide Mobility Strategy was adopted. That was an update to the Parks and Trails Master Plan before it, which carried over the approval uh, and reconfirmed Twelve Street as a priority sidewalk and priority corridor. Twelve Street does go through this portion of the industrial area of Armadale. It also goes through the heart of the residential portion of Armadale. Twelve Street is also the um, bike ped facility that goes all the way up to Quandero, across the bridge and over to Argentine. This is our primary bike facility corridor. Um, this is in the Armadale area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Um, to be expected from a Um, to be expected from a use like this, there has a, there have been a couple of police calls um relative to the use. Step does recommend approval um for five years with conditions, including the ones noted. Um, by the applicant's representative. Um, I would say just a couple of things to address those comments. Uh, it's been the practice of the unified government for generations to uh require public improvements like sidewalks uh. Um, be completed by uh applicants through land entitlements. This is our sidewalk to nowhere conversation that we have on a regular basis. Over time, those get built out in accordance. Um, is the is the uh intent. I would also note that it is the ordinance of the board of the uh unified government that uh. All property owners are to maintain their public rights away uh and the portions of the public right of way in their facilities. So they're in charge of maintaining their sidewalks and curbs and gutters uh accordingly. And as we've heard from our board commissioners and others on and on and on, again, while it's not a factor to be considered, this is a um constrained community in terms of budgets. Uh, so finding the funding or pursuing uh other alternatives do are plausible, but um this is the path forward that the UG has decided for. Quite some time. Um, although it does obviously come down to the board, the planning commission and the board of commissioners to make these decisions accordingly. Um, so if you look at uh the application here uh real quickly. Um, as it relates to sidewalks, uh again, this is at the uh abutting the trailhead for the Levy Betterment's Trail. Um, that exists today and is getting built. Uh, or rebuilt as the levees are raised uh in the Armadale area, working their way back from the confluence. Um, you can see the building out here into the front. Really, condition number two is really tied to condition number one. Uh, you could build a sidewalk trail without a curb, but typically you have to. Rebuild your curb when you're building a sidewalk. And so if you look right here, there is essentially no curb between the building and the streets. Um, essentially, everything in front of this building is public right of way. And people roll right up into it because there is no curb and park in the public right of way accordingly. All the landscaping proposed uh in condition number three does not specifically say anything about being in the public right of way. Our intent there as written is that it is landscaping along the left, or left, along the eastern property line and the southern property line to to. Uh, buffer the use uh again from the public right of way as well as from the the trail accordingly, so. With that, staff recommends approval of five years with all the conditions.
Alright, Gunner, just a clarification with the bottom right hand, uh the bottom right hand corner where the white car is. What side of the building is that on and because that car's parked, looks like there is a pseudo curb there that's.
Yeah, you can see it's right on the curb. So that's in the, that's in the public right of way. The parking lot is wholly within the property. And then on the other side of the property is that fence that contains the Pick and Pull. So the the parking, surface parking lot's kind of enclosed in its own gate. Or fencing and then the property, it's the use itself is uh a much harder uh fence line around the entire property.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Muller, you have a question?
Uh, y- yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Gunner, i- if after a successful five year. Run, wouldn't they be due 10 years next instead of another five?
Um, the term is up to the discretion of the board, or excuse me, the planning commission, the board of commissioners. We decided to keep it at five um so that we could uh see through the implementation of these conditions of approval.
But it is standard to go to five, 10.
It can go to 10, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Director Hand? Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
So in the, if you guys can go back to the picture. So the area between the fence parking lot and the curb, whose responsibility is that to maintain that? I'm just, I'm asking.
That is in the public right of way, and so from curb back, it's the responsibility of the uh property owner to maintain that. It's the same principle if you have to shovel your own sidewalk.
And has there, has there ever been a curb in front of the building before?
Yeah.
And it's just been destroyed over the years and.
And nude, basically, it's underneath a a couple of layers of asphalt. Probably looks just like this in the picture.
Yeah.
Buried by asphalt over years of resurfacing.
When it comes to something like this, when you're asking somebody to do this. But when the petitioner's saying it's. Well, three quarters of a million dollars, um, I'm not a pick and pull expert. I don't know how much that business makes. I really don't know. Um, that would seem, that'd be a lot of, lots of years of revenue to try even pay for improvements such as that. Um, and it can, in something like this where it's exorbitant, if that is correct. You know, and what what would be your stance on something like that?
I just want to provide a clarification. The the petitioner said it was 300,000, so it's about a quarter, about three quarters. Oh, I'm sorry, one third, one third of a million, I'm sorry. In a way, it's a lot of money to me anyway.
There's a, yeah, no, the property has quite a bit of linear feet on the public right of way. Uh, let me go to the, so this, the sidewalk on 12th Street Bridge really sinks up right about here, so it'd be a little bit less than, but. Um, this is not dissimilar from any sidewalk we require of any other entitlement. The only difference is typically we ask those and try to get those in during construction of the project in totality. This is a renewal, so um again, it's a new entitlement. The staff believes we are um trying to implement the long range plans. Adopted by our Board of Commissioners through these actions. Um, this is our comprehensive plan in action, if you will, our mobility plan in action. But we defer to the wisdom of the planning commission.
In the, in the event that we were for and to approve this for like a 10 year span, like Commissioner Muller. That would give them some time over so, o- over a long period of time to make those improvements, which are probably a little easier on the pocketbook for the business.
If you wanted to give them a longer period of time to accomplish the goals, you'd have to write a separate, you'd have to include that in your motion. There's a condition, not a condition of approval, there's a requirement in the code that all the conditions of approval have to be met, have to be built within six months to a year. So you could let that out if you wanted, and staff did offer to figure out a way to phase this over time if need be. And we're still happy to do that. Um, landscaping seems like a pretty easy one to keep in staff's opinion. Um, that does have a cost to it for sure. I think the applicant noted that 10% of that number is somewhere around landscaping. Uh, again, we're asking for the side that faces the trail and the side that faces the public right of way for some buffering there. There are many alternatives according to our Go Dot Countywide Mobility Strategy um to address a sidewalk or a trail. Um, so we can find other ways to design it that are less expensive than concrete, that are less expensive than a curb. And we could do potentially, I don't know if the applicant uh discuss this in detail with with our lead planner, but just off the top of my head, I mean. We really want the curb in front of the building because they shouldn't be parking like that um in front of it. Uh, the rest of it, we can figure something else out. So I think there's a way we could design. As I've said many times, I do believe there's a design solution. We're happy to phase it if need be, um, but we defer to the wisdom of the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Director Hand, to what degree would you be willing to, what is it appropriate in terms of uh spreading that cost? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, again, I think, I think it's important to note that custom project is not a factor to be considered in entitlement, so uh for staff, it's. Uh, we're willing to work with the applicant, uh. My gut would tell me if we wanted to face it, we should just leave the landscaping as is, have that be done within six months to a year. And then potentially work through some issues with the other two, depending on the way that the planning commission and board commissioner want to roll with this.
But do we need to give you those instructions, like a third and a third and a third over a period of 10 years? Or will you, do we just need to give you the, do we just need to, if we wanted to, if we're so inclined to keep the conditions? Leave it to you to work out the deal with the.
For the sake of time and considering the agenda tonight. If we wanted, if the planning commission wanted us to hash that out, there is no harm in continuing for 30 days because the business is still under operation, right? We're not preventing them from stopping their business or anything like that. They're still rolling right now. They were open today. Um, so we could, if the planning commission wanted to give the applicant direction to work with staff on those three conditions and figure out. Whatever it is you want us to figure out, we could definitely do that for 30 days.
Commissioner Jones, any follow up?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Alright, thank you. Anything else for Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Director Hand? He's saying none, I will stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I want to move for a holdover of uh 30 days. Um, on special use permit application SP 2023 dash 110 uh specific to conditions one. One and, is it one and two that we're talking about in lan- the landscaping would probably want to keep that out?
If you, the landscaping condition is number three.
Number three, okay, so just in in the, I mean, if we hold it all over, it has to be all held over, so. Yeah, go ahead and hold over for 30 days um so that uh the petitioner and uh the planning department can work out an agreement as to the. Specifics, uh specifics of of working out how we would address uh one, two, and three.
Alright, thank you. Motion is for a 30 day holdover for the applicant to work with the planning staff to come up with a mutually agreeable solutions. Conditions that were described in tonight's meeting. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
And did I summarize your motion? Okay, yes, sir. Alright, thank you. Uh, it's been moved to second and for a 30 day holdover. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood? Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over the special use permit until the March 11th meeting. For the staff and the applicant to further discuss the proposed conditions, one, two, and three. Passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and Janet, for clarification purposes for those on the uh consent agenda, everything will move on to the Board of Commissioners on February 29th.
No.
No, with the.
The only thing that moves on to the Board of Commissioners is the special.
Yeah. So special use applications will go on to the Board of Commissioners on February 29th at 7:00 PM. So if your case was on the consent agenda, uh they have been moved on and they've been approved, you don't need to stay for the rest of the meeting. Unless you're here for the show. Thank you, and sir, we'll see you in 30 days. Thank you, Janet.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the consent agenda, and we will now move on to the non-consent agenda. Our first application is change of zone application COZ 2023 dash zero three zero Riyadh Baghdadi. Change of zone from R1B, single family district to R2B, two family district. To construct a duplex at 2919 West 44th Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February 12, 2024. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Baghdadi, are you in the au- audience? Either online or in person, Riyadh Baghdadi. Hey, I'm not seeing him online either. Gunner, this case can't be, cannot be approved anyway due to no neighborhood meeting. But do you want to go ahead and give us a quick synopsis and see if you want to?
Ye- yes, yes, Mr. Chair, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Design, so um this is one of those cases where we've had an unresponsive applicant. Um, for quite some time now. These were filed last September. Um, we're not sure what happened. We haven't been able to get ahold of Mr. Baghdadi about this case in particular. Um, it has not had a neighborhood meeting. So the only thing that could happen would be a holdover or denial, but due to its un- their unresponsiveness, we'd like to remove this off the agenda and recommend denial.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Mr. Beth?
No.
Sorry, alright, saying none, I will stand for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Beth?
I I move we deny COZ 2023 zero three zero for uh. The reasons.
Unresponsiveness from the.
Unresponsiveness failed uh followed through with his requirements.
Alright, thank you. Motion is made for denial by Commissioner Beth due to the unresponsiveness of the applicant uh over the last several months. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for denial? Saying none, roll call.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood? Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Sherman, that motion to recommend denial of change of zone 30. For the four reasons outlined in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Commissioner Muller, do you have a comment?
I think, I think I needed to vote on that, didn't I?
Did we miss him?
Well, it looks like I just skipped right on over you. I'm sorry.
We skipped back.
And could I please have your vote?
Aye.
Now it makes it eight to zero. Sorry about that.
Thank you, sir.
We have two applications that we are going to hear together. Change of zone application COZ 2023 dash zero three two Ashley Meek. Change of zone from R1, single family district to AG Agriculture District to operate an. Agro tourism business at 3921 North 51st Street. And special use permit SP 2023 dash 112 for the same use at the same address. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February 12, 2024. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meek. I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name and address and then tell us what you want to do.
Hey, everyone. My name is Ashley Meek. My address is 869 Quandero Boulevard. And um the business is located at 3921 North 51st Street. Um, I wanted to start off by kind of telling you guys a little bit about my background before I pop into my dream. Because uh I've been working in the agricultural world now for about five years. I started off at a split log farm, working for a community housing in Wyandotte County. And KC Healthy Kids uh managing an organic farm that provided food to families in KCK. And early education centers. I have also helped put on the Eat Local and Organic Expo. And help manage the KC Food Circle, which is a local organic directory of farmers in the area. And then I have also been on the board for the KCK Farmers Market going on. Three or four years, so I've been pretty busy. I was running that farm before I started my farm, which was consequently at the same time as the pandemic. And um basically, I I put a lot on my plate so that I could learn a lot in a, in a quick amount of time. So now I'm here, I was able to purchase 3921 North 51st Street. After about an eight month closing challenge in November. And I was awarded uh a farm, farm loan, ownership loan and construction loan from the USDA. To put on this production, including the things that I am requesting um during this hearing. And essentially what my goal is, is to not only create an agro tourism destination for the consumer. But it's an agro tourism destination that's actually geared towards other farmers and collaborating with farmers. So at uh 3921 North 51st Street, this will be a 10 acre property. Um, I'm not sure if you guys have pictures of the site map I put up. Uh, that I put together, but essentially um it will be a space for farmers and chefs to collaborate. Um, by one, being able to come and learn on site how to uh grow food. In an agro forestry design, as well as how to process food. Or even just this process of applying for a permit. It's been a. A huge learning curve in the last three months. a huge learning curve in the last three months of, uh, learning everything about planning and zoning. And I want to kind of take that information and create a playbook for other urban farmers because the process for farmers, it's not only difficult to get land and money, but it's extremely difficult to navigate, um, basically uh, anything related to permits, zoning business, and a lot of farmers don't have access to that. Uh, fortunately, because of my experience and my degree and my work within the community, I've gotten a pretty good bird's eye view of the needs of both farmers and the consumer. So I'd like to pass on that information and work with farmers on this farm. I've actually already, uh, started building partnerships with my neighboring farmer, which is, uh, the gardens at Dogwood. Um, and then my other neighbor has fifty acres and we've talked about, um, partnering on his farm or his land as well. Um, the land itself is almost all forest and it has a lot of native plants that you don't see on a, on a main street, uh, including pears, um, hickory, blackberry, gooseberry, all sorts of things. And essentially what I'd like to do is utilize that forest to not only cultivate and sell those native plants to the community, but also to harvest all of that and process it within my certified kitchen, um, and food truck. So additionally, most sales will not be on property. So traffic wise, this is not going to be a high traffic area. In fact, my goal is to keep it as quiet and as inviting, uh, as possible. And, uh, the food truck itself will actually be used to travel to other markets to sell my produce as well as, uh, plants and other goods and also partner with other farmers, um, to sell things out of my food truck. Um, so I've kind of got, you can kind of see the site map here. One of the things that I'm requesting is the campground, which I know is a challenge in Wyandotte, uh, because there aren't any, uh, campgrounds really in Wyandotte County. Um, I'm not quite sure what the challenge has been for recre- recreational uh, campgrounds in this area, but I'm hoping that, uh, you guys will consider mine because my goal is to create accommodations for farmers that are out of state or out of town that want to come and sell in the city. They'll have an affordable place to not only, uh, stay, but they'll be able to sell their wares directly to me if they'd like, or, uh, to other partners that I'm working with, like chefs in the area or even, uh, you know, learning about wholesale and connecting with the network that is here in Kansas City. So essentially this farm is, is not only about cultivating balance in my environment and sharing that food with the community, but it's also about cultivating balance and sharing resources between farmers and creating a space that is a retreat for farmers while also helping them grow their business. And that's, uh, I think the gist of it, if you'd like to hear more about uh, my entire business plan, it's pretty dynamic because as a farmer, we can't just have all of our eggs in one basket. So we always offer lots of, lots of different, uh, amenities for, uh, customers and consumers. So if you'd like to learn more about what I'd like to do there, I'd love to share that information, but I do have about a, a thirty page, uh, business plan. I'm not sure if you want to hear all of it.
I think the people in the audience probably don't, but.
Probably not.
It does sound, we've got a couple of hands up, but it does sound interesting and, uh, and certainly very, uh, um, not aggressive, but what's the word I'm looking for? Anyway, uh, yes, yeah. But anyways, uh, but sounds great. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, I've got one. It is Commissioner Easterwood. Ambitious was the word I was looking for. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Ms. Meeks, are you still operating the, uh, community garden at the corner of Ninth and Quandero?
Uh, I am moving everything over, but we had a, uh, well, one, this was, this was delayed, so all of my storage uh, has not been built yet. And then, uh, the snowstorms kind of destroyed the drive. So we've been doing some cleanup on the new property, some challenges that we're facing, but no, everything will be moved from there, from the, uh, vacant lots to this property, um, and to essentially be utilized. We've been storing everything, waiting for a property to come along to do exactly this.
Would you say that the way you, um, maintain that a garden would be representative of how you plan on maintaining your proposed, um, plan?
Uh, no. Uh, so one, I, at Ninth and Quandero, we have three vacant lots and they are land bank property. Um, that property, we started out right, uh, in twenty twenty, I signed a land bank lease uh, with the intent of purchasing that property after two years if no one, uh, wanted to build on it. And that's what I told when I, I, that's what I was told when I signed the lease and I began investing and then after two years found out that the only way I could buy those three vacant lots is if I became a nonprofit, gave all my food away or built a house on every single lot. Um, so essentially that happened as well as three hit and runs. Uh, because of the, the laws with, or the, the rules around land bank, we weren't allowed to install any structures or fences or anything that basically had any worth. And then if we did have anything with worth, it was stolen. We actually had a twenty by ten greenhouse stolen in the middle of the night. We've had three hit and runs, uh, shootings, you name it. It's been, it's been a real struggle to try to uh, improve a prom property that you can't actually get any funding for because they won't sell it to you unless you build a house. So it was really like an experiment, um, as well as just kind of learning more about farming. Uh, and I would like to maintain in the sense of, uh, the one that's across the street, I'd like to beautify it and make it all flowers. Uh, but everything else is going to be removed from the other, uh, parcel and, um, either sold or reused on my farm. Uh, and then as for the fencing and stuff like that, again, uh, we weren't allowed to put anything of value on it. So we had to use what we had so that we wouldn't, didn't lose too much money. So a lot of the stuff that we have acquired has been donated and or, uh, uh, recycled. So, no. I'm act- I actually have funding to do all of this and I've already invested over thirty-five thousand dollars into this property and I don't even have a building on it yet.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward either in the chambers or raise your hand online. Okay, sir, go ahead. We'll start with the chamber. I do have some hands up online. We'll get to you in just a moment. So be patient with. Yes, sir. Go ahead. Your name and address.
Robert Carl, three six one nine North Sixty-seventh Street. Uh, I like the idea. I'm in favor of it. I also wonder sometimes why we don't have more campgrounds and why there's such a vacant area of business and recreation stuff in Wyandotte County. But I'm definitely in favor of it. Permaculture and all those other great gardening ideas are definitely beneficial and having somewhere where that people can actually go to for resources or at least ideas to consult with is definitely a benefit. So as long as that gets out there, that'd be great. So.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Yeah, we'll go online. I've got Christine Williams. Christine, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Christine Williams. My address is eight three one nine Independence Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one two five. And I am in favor of Talking Tree doing this, um, project. I'm very excited about it as a chef and a farmer and also an education center where we teach farming and all kinds of farming and chef stuff and cooking and everything you can do with agriculture. This would be a great asset to, um, a neighboring area because we are right downtown Kansas City off of twenty-four highway and four thirty-five, and this would be the opposite where between both facilities, we'd be able to teach a lot of farmers and, um, just how to farm and, and chefs how to, to actually cook from the garden and to be able to get more local food into the Kansas City area, Kansas City, Kansas and Missouri. So I am all in favor of Ashley doing this.
All right. Thank you very much. I've got, is it Patrick Garrison or Patric Garrison?
Does it sound okay?
Yeah.
It's Patrick Garrison. Sorry.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Um, I am also speaking in favor of, uh, Talking Tree Urban Farm getting these variances. Uh, I live at two seventy-six South Mill Street, KCK. Uh, in my time here, uh, I, I've been involved in the food industry for about a decade in the Kansas City area. And when my wife and I bought a house in uh, close to downtown Kansas City, Kansas, pretty soon we found out there was a farmer's market. And at the time, one of the first people to greet you there was Ashley. Um, and she was very supportive and it's a really small market, but she really does all she can while working full time and being a mother to help it grow. Um, and as well as working at Talking Tree Urban Farm and trying to get that started and what she has planned for this project, uh, at Fifty-first Street would be an offshoot of that. And along with helping her reach her goals and building up the area and being able to help feed people locally grown, sustainable food. It is also to help people grow in their dreams, um, and supporting them to be able to figure out how we can make this entire community better, um, and fill up the empty storefronts and fill up the empty lots to make sure people have that and there's more to do and more reason to stay in the area.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Garrison. I have Olivia Moore. Olivia Moore.
Uh, this is Olivia Moore at, uh, fifty twenty-nine Haskell Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero four. Um, I am the farm manager at Bell Crossing Farm, which is on thirty-eight sixty Bell Crossing Drive in KCK. And I'm in favor of this, uh, change of zone and special use permit.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Uh, KCK Market Manager.
Yes, uh, hello, my name is Corinne Shaw. Um, address is, uh, ten twenty-six Mildred, KCK. Um, I am also in favor of, uh, Talking Tree Urban Farm. Um, I, uh, manage the KCK Farmers Market and they have, uh, Ashley um, and Talking Tree Urban Farm have definitely been, uh, an asset to our farmer's market, um, as well as Ashley, uh, participating in our board. Um, she's very passionate about, about what she's doing and, uh, I think that her ideas and, and, uh, everything she's gonna bring is, uh, definitely going to be a benefit to the community and to the food system. So all in favor.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is a change of zone from R one to A G as well as a special use permit, um, excuse me, for a, for the campground component of the, of the proposal. Uh, I would note that, uh, this is in the, uh, citywide conference of plan, Plan KCK in the north midtown area. You can kind of see it right here, but north northwest, almost abutting to the proposal is another agro tourism business accessed off of a different road. So there's a bit of a, hmm, bit of a cluster potentially occurring in this part of our community for agro businesses. This, uh, proposal did receive letters in support. In addition to what we heard this evening from the public, there's been no letters of opposition. There are some notices of violation, uh, that have been addressed on the property related to its, uh, it previously being vacant. Again, the applicant noted some work that she'd already been working on, uh, been doing on the property accordingly. Staff recommends approval of the change of zone and approval of the special use permit for two years with conditions, um, including the conservation plan. We already know that Mrs. Meeks is working with Conservation District on that, um, as well as, uh, limiting the, uh, visitors to the site to thirty max.
Okay. Any questions for Director Hand? Okay, seeing none, I will need two motions. Uh, Janet, change of zone and then special use?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
I, I think this initiative is, is commendable, especially as it relates to a healthier community. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion for case number, um, change of zone two zero two three dash zero three two, um, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? For this is for change of zone. Seeing none, roll call.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Bev.
Aye.
Easterwood.
No.
Did you say no?
Yes.
Okay. Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone application COZ twenty twenty-three dash zero three two subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. Now I'll need a motion for the special use permit. Commissioner Jones?
I make a motion, uh, for the approval of the petitioner's request, special use permit two zero two three dash one one two subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval for the special use permit by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for the special use permit approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Bev.
Aye.
Easterwood.
No.
Ernst.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the special use permit subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor, one opposed.
All right. Thank you. These will be heard once again on February twenty-ninth at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Our next application is change of zone application COZ twenty twenty-three dash zero three three. Robert Carl, change of zone from R one, single family district to A G Agriculture District to use the property for agricultural purposes at sixty-eight fifteen Cernich Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Carl, go ahead and give us your name and address once again, please, and tell us what you'd like to do with your property.
Right. Thanks, sir. Uh, my name is Robert Carl. Uh, present address is, uh, three six one nine North Sixty-seventh Street. Uh, future primary address is going to be the six eight one five Cernich Road. Um, so our family desires to have a small family farm, often called a farmstead, where we can raise livestock, including a couple milk goats, chickens and barn cats, uh, grow a family garden and build and maintain the necessary infrastructure to support stated livestock. This includes maintenance of the existing barn, loafing shed and chicken coop, as well as build an ag garage for farm equipment and supplies. Thus, it is necessary, uh, to result, to allow for the additional ag-related structures and additional animals on occasion as the dairy does have kids and/or the herd grows. Ag would also allow for sale of the yearlings from the property. We will not be doing butchering for commercial purposes on our property. As noted in, uh, total application, uh, the neighboring baseball field, which, uh, we also own and as touching the six eight one five Cernich Road uh, property may during times and seasons provide ample feed for the goats and being sufficiently distanced from residential homes. Uh, grateful for this process, uh, we have had the opportunity to meet with many neighbors, all of the, all of whom are supportive and excited for our intended rezone purposes, all those that we've met. Uh, and of course for the livestock, uh, we met with the Miranda family yesterday while we were cleaning trash from the right of way and they were excited to visit and pet the future goats. I am experienced in animal husband. I am experienced in animal husbandry, conservation planning and land management. My wife grew up helping a local rancher in Florida as well. I desire for my children to experience the joy and inherent responsibility in animal husbandry, husbandry, site management and plant and animal science. Uh, plans were submitted for animal and waste management and disposal, and I am already working with conservation districts per planning's request to confirm runoff and erosion, erosion mitigation plans. I thought I'd, uh, after hearing the, uh, that lawyer or the, uh, uh, the sports complex, I thought I'd, uh, try to be cool too. Um, so I wrote a couple of things down here in relation to, uh, future factors.
We'll be the judge of that.
Okay.
We're not sure, sure Mr. Peterson is that cool, but give it your best shot.
Well, thank you very much. I ain't no lawyer, but presentation skills is subpar, but whatever. Um, so let's consider it a number five, six and seven, uh, for the extent of proposed, um, use of the property, number five, so there's no detriment to local housing market. Uh, so that's plus because it is private property. Uh, there's no increase in traffic because once again, it's, uh, gonna be used for private purposes. And, uh, number seven, um, the proposed use is in conformance with the Plan KC and Comprehensive Plan.
Very cool.
Thank you. Uh, so the house, I did want to mention this in particular, the house was lived in by the previous owner. Uh, needs some fresh paint and some new drywall, but other than that, we have stayed there multiple times and are excited to move in as our primary home shortly. Um, and I also did want to mention that as a voluntary body, I do thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, sir. It's been, it's been fun bantering with you. Um, the only thing I want to ask is what is a loafing shed? It sounds like Commissioner Ward's, uh, man cave.
No, loafing shed is usually a three-sided structure where, uh, animals reside with the south-facing opening.
Oh, okay, a little bit different than, than, than his loafing, okay.
And for particular in this area, uh, it will be more of an enclosure because it is.
Because of the weather.
Exactly.
Great, thank you. Uh, serious questions for the applicant? Seeing none, okay. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor of or in opposition to? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. I see somebody. Go ahead and give me your name and address.
My name is Hannah Carl and my address.
I'll take whatever you give me.
Is six eight one five Cernich Road. And I support this. This thing.
Application?
Application.
Huh?
Um, because I believe that owning animals improves someone as it gives them responsibility and skills with animals. I would also be able to take care of chickens again and this per, wait. And this property, when zoned agriculture, would allow me to do that.
Well, thank you very much. And is that your father behind you? Can I tell you something? I think you're a little bit cooler than he is, just so you know.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't know who wants to follow that. Oh, we do have somebody who wants to follow it, yes. And your name and address?
Fiona Carl. I have the same as him.
Mm-hmm, that guy, sixty-eight fifteen Cernich, right? Yep.
And I really want to be able to have those goats because I really want goats too.
Okay, sounds good. We're all for goats. All right, thank you. You're pretty cool yourself. Okay, any, anybody else online or in person? I don't know who, who can top that. I'm cer- I'm certainly glad Mr. Peterson isn't here because he would try. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting and we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Governor Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, we have a change of zone in front of us for, uh, from R one to AG for agricultural purposes as described by the applicant this evening. This is in the Plan KCK Conferences, uh, Plan Area in the north midtown kind of Cernich neighborhood group. We received no letters of support before this evening, no letters of opposition. There are some older notices of violation associated with property at all, which would be addressed by this application. Staff recommends approval with conditions, including the conservation plan. The applicant noted he's already working on with Conservation District.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? I might note it was a bit shameless of you to bring these nice two young ladies with you to try to garner our favor, but it certainly were, has worked, or I think, think it might. Uh, with that, I will stand for a motion if there's no questions for Director Hand.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Although it breaks my heart to see a baseball field that I used to play on.
Oh, that's right.
You go away.
Um.
They've abandoned.
Um, I move to approve, uh, change of zone two zero two three dash zero three three, uh, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion for approval has been made by Commissioner Ward, as there's a second by Commissioner Beth. Any discussion? Mr. Armstrong was, uh, there you go, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of change of zone thirty-three, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on February twenty-ninth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners. I see goats in your future. All right, thank you.
That takes us now to our special use permit applications. The first one is SP twenty twenty-three dash zero seven eight, Andrew Harris with Piper Development Group. Special use permit for grading and removal of earth and fill at forty-nine nineteen North one hundred and twenty-sixth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty-four, the application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, I have you queued up, ready to speak. Your name and address, please. Mr. Harris? Mr. Harris, go ahead and unmute yourself and then give us your name and address, please.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please.
My name is Andrew Harris with Piper Development Group. I'm the property manager. Uh, the address is seventy-one eighty West one hundred and seventh Street, Suite One, Oldham Park, Kansas, six six two one two. This is for the property forty-nine nineteen North one hundred twenty-sixth Street.
And what are you doing out there, sir?
Okay, this is just a continuation of a cleanup project that we already started, um, based on what happened. There is a stop work order out there. And the planning commissioner, uh, the planning, uh, they, they, they told us it's best that we get a special use permit to continue the project of cleaning up the property. Uh, this property has a issue of dish repair and a lot of things that, uh, was very dangerous such as, you know, dilapidated bridges and pipes and things of that nature. So we want to get this permit to property and, uh, to probably address the issue on the property. And it's gonna be overdone over several phases.
Okay, so are you removing dirt or are you bringing dirt in? What?
We will be removing some dirt, um, but the dirt is due to the erosion um, in certain parts of that property that has been neglected for many, many, many years. That's basically, uh, we're gonna focus in the canal area of that Piper Lake area. Uh, there's tons of erosion that's happened due to the dilapidation of a, a particular area. And then we're gonna do some regrading, but all the dirt we need is out there. So it's basically cleaning up the erosion issues that's been done due to the neglect of that property.
Okay, and how long is this? How long have you currently been doing this?
Uh, we, uh, on this property?
Yes.
Yeah, we purchased the property almost two years ago now. And as soon as we purchased the property, we started cleaning up part. And then we had several, um, of the neighbors, uh, put in complaints, um, for various reasons. And then the stop work order was issued. And then based on our discussions, um, they, they want, it's best we do the special use permit so we can continue.
Report over the complaints by the neighbors.
Uh, mainly, uh, I wouldn't say it was complaints. I think it was this complaint that we had, uh, done the proper, went through proper channels to do the major, uh, renovate, clean up that we were doing. We had to take down several trees. So once they saw that, um, they said it's best we get the special use permit, but we wasn't moving that fast, basically just cleaning it up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? In favor or in opposition? Seeing no one online or in, in the chambers, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand to get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Governor Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is a special use permit for grading. It was the result, as the applicant noted, of stop work order. This is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. We received no letters in support, no letters of opposition. Again, there is an open stop and work order that would be addressed by this, uh, special use permit if approved tonight, recommended for approval tonight and by the Board of Commissioners ultimately. Staff recommends approval, uh, for two years with conditions.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Easterwood?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Okay, motion for approval made by Commissioner Easterwood. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Hmm.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of special use permit seventy-eight for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on February twenty-ninth at seven PM.
Our next special use permit is SP twenty twenty-three dash zero nine four, Fran Sutton with Cross Lines. Special use permit to operate an emergency cold weather shelter at eight fifty State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty-four, the application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sutton, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, start off with your name and address and tell us what you want to do here.
Hello, my name is Fran Sutton and I am here representing Cross Lines Community Outreach, uh, located at eight thirty, excuse me, seven thirty-six Shawnee in Kansas City, Kansas. Uh, the use, the, uh, purpose of our special use permit is to request a cold weather shelter at five fifty State Avenue. In looking at, um, some of the questions that the Planning and Design Committee had, um, we've already submitted a floor plan. The shelter would only be open when the temperatures below, dropped below twenty-five degrees at night. It would basically only be open at nighttime with staff entering the building at around three or four PM. Our guests would be entering around six PM and exiting the building between seven and eight AM and then remaining staff, uh, cleaning the building until about nine AM. Um, the occupancy limit is forty. The, um, we already have a dumpster on site. There is no room and board charged. This, these are members of our most vulnerable community, um, community members that are experiencing houselessness. We, um, do not need a parking agreement because we do have a gated parking lot available for our staff. Cross Lines offers solutions, um, that will help our houseless community achieve permanent housing in the future. So with regards to other services offered on site, we may be visited by Care Beyond the Boulevard to assess medical needs for our guests as well as staff members from Cross Lines that might be doing interviews or assessments with our guests to determine eligibility and also, um, developing care plans and case plans for permanent housing in the future. Um, let's see. If we were to have emergency situations, we would just contact, uh, members of our local police department for assistance. Um, and we do utilize other, um, organizations to help other local organizations to work in our shelter. And that's, that's all of my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm making sure I'm hearing this right. There's no onsite security at all?
We do not have onsite security. The building is locked. Um, we follow fire department guidelines for which doors are locked, but it is, uh, locked during the day and in the evening. So we have ample number of staff per guest ratios.
Okay, and five fifty, is that, is that the ribbon center? No, no.
No, um, depending on your age, you might recommend it as the old, um, unemployment building. It's right on the corner of Fifth and State on the northeast corner.
Gotcha, okay.
Uh, other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Yes, ma'am, your name and address.
I am Susila Jones. Um, I am the Executive Director with Cross Lines Community Outreach, um, at seven thirty-six Shawnee Avenue. Um, Fran has done an excellent job of kind of communicating what this is. I wanted to just go into a little bit of the history of the program. As many of you may know, Windot County does not have a homeless shelter. So this is the only opportunity for people on the coldest of nights. Otherwise, it is, um, people would literally be on the street. So this is a life-saving mechanism. And Mr. Ward, I believe your question regarding security, all of our staff are trained in de-escalation. So our first, you know, so we have trained staff who are there to kind of prevent things from, from needing law enforcement. However, we are very proud of our, um, relationship with the police department to come in when needed. Um, and then also we've had a great, as Fran mentioned, great relationship with the fire department and they've had their community paramedic on site. Um, so it's just been a great collaborative, um, project. And even though Cross, Cross Lines name is the one on it, we have multiple partners in the, um, helping us with this project. So I just wanted to add that piece to it.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is James Martin and I'm a volunteer for Cross Lines. So whatever y'all can do to approve that, I appreciate it. And you know, the help they, they can get. Uh, they reach out to so many people in the community and I think it's a real good thing they're doing.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Governor Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, we have a special use permit, uh, uh, on the docket for, uh, cold weather shelter. This is effectively an SUP for a group home. This is in the, uh, downtown area plan. Staff has received no letters in support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation on this, for this property. Staff recommends approval for two years with conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petitioner's request for special use permit two zero two three dash zero nine four, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner E- Easterwood?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
No.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P ninety-four for two years. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on February twenty-ninth at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Our next special use permit is S P twenty twenty-three dash zero nine six Sandra Coleman. Special use permit to operate a short-term rental at twenty-eight fifteen North eighty-first Court. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Coleman, are you in the audience or are you online? Sandra Coleman. Yeah, I don't see the applicant here. Uh Gunner, I understand there's been no neighborhood meeting, so we cannot. Move this forward. So we have a choice of what, holdover or denial? And can you give us some background?
Uh yes, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resigning. Again, not too dissimilar from the changes zone we heard earlier this evening. This has been an unresponsive applicant uh application. Uh they applied last September. We haven't really heard anything from them for months. They have not had a neighborhood plan, so the only actions we could take would be a holdover over denial. Staff recommends denial due to inactivity.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Beth.
I move we deny special use permit twenty twenty-three dash zero nine six for unresponsive uh applicant. Failure to comply with the requirements.
Thank you. Motion for denial made by Commissioner Beth for failure to comply and or uh respond. Uh is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Hmm.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of S P one oh seven. As the applicant did not host a neighborhood meeting, post proper notice on the subject property. Or respond to staff comments and suggestions passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Our next application is S P twenty twenty-three dash one oh three. Juan Carlos. Mel Donna Do.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Janet, did you did you say the case number is S P twenty twenty-three dash zero nine six? For Sandra Coleman?
Uh I thought I said one oh three, but I could have said ninety-six.
Okay, but it is zero nine six.
No, we're on.
It was one oh three.
We're on one oh three.
One oh three.
We just finished ninety-six.
Right. Is that what you're asking me?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Maybe I think Mr. Commissioner Beth is ahead of me and I'm behind. So there you go. Alright, he was behind. I'm blushing again, so.
Are are we all on the same page now?
You know, Janet, as long as we're on your page, that's all that matters. So you you keep going and and.
Alright.
And I will get there.
Special use permit for the temporary use of land to keep a semi truck. At the residence at forty-nine thirty-six Waverly Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Mr. Chairman, um I would like to note that uh late this afternoon. I did see receive emails from two people that could not attend the meeting. In opposition to this application, um Benita Johnson and Glenda Hughes. Uh they are both in opposition to it.
Alright, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Are you the applicant?
No, absolutely, I'm um he's um.
Interpreting? Okay, wife, okay, thank you. Go ahead and give us your name, please, and address.
Alright, so good evening. My name is Letitia Cervantes and my address is forty-nine thirty-six Waverly Avenue.
Okay, can you speak just a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you better?
Okay. Well, um um we live over there by ten years ago. Um we are a. Regular family working. My husband and me, we are work for our family to support and take care of my kids. Uh the reason we apply for this uh special permit. It's because on the winter, uh it's difficult for me and my husband to drive my husband to his work. And then come back to go take my kids on the school and then after that I gotta go to work. So his place work, it's twenty minutes to my house. And then especially what I'm saying on winter time, it's hard for me to drive in over there and then come back to pick my kids and. Driving to the school and then go to my work. I don't really wanna lose my job for many points or make my husband lose his job because. That's the way we support our family. And then also, we um. Are the persons who's never asked for anything help for this country. We always working hard and then. We never ask for anything. So um. We never have a complaint for our neighbors into now because we parking our semi truck on our house. Uh I also our truck. It's not making a big noise. We never struck any or nobody on the street. And we just parking like regular like the other neighbors around to our house. Because we saw uh we never pay attention on these trucks around our neighbor. Into now, then our neighbors complain about um this parking. We see uh many other trucks around our neighbor to parking in the same way and we just thinking like. We can have an especial permit for, I know and we understand it's just for two years. But that is gonna help on us maybe to find another place for leave.
Okay, thank you. Where's the truck parked during the summer and the other times?
Now, my husband work for an uh um special company and right now he's parking on down there to Warsaw Farm.
Okay, so you drive him there in the morning to pick up the truck, so and then come back and take his.
Back to the his job. His job is in North Kansas City.
Okay, so the the hardship is in the winter, the winter months, but it's harder for you to drive.
Especially on the wind.
Okay, yeah. Alright, thank you. Let's see if we have any questions for you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Beth.
How big of a truck is it?
Huh?
How big of a truck is it? What size truck are we talking about?
Uh it's it's a semi truck.
A semi truck?
Yes.
Is that it got a, it has a sleeper cab on the back of it?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Alright, so it's a big one.
Commercial vehicle?
It's the mark?
A commercial vehicle, a business truck?
It's not a business. It's for um um well, it's for a company. My husband.
Company owns the truck, correct? Okay, thank you.
Alright, other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward. Yes. Yes, sir. Need your name and address, please. Go ahead and raise that microphone up for you so we can hear you.
Uh my name is James Martin and I stay at the address at forty-nine twenty-seven Waverly.
Okay.
I've been there probably about fifteen years or more. And. We never had a truck up in the neighborhood parking. Uh in our neighborhood. Here about two years ago, we just had the city come in redo our streets. They haven't done that in like twenty years or more. My concern is. That with this truck coming up in the neighborhood and we live in the hillier, we kinda like. Got hills we go up. We got kids around there. I ain't gonna say the kids may get around there and mess with the truck. But uh to me is eyesore um. You know, pa- uh property value, you know, went up, you know. So so what I'm saying is that. There's places real close he making park at. You know, opposed to going down to North Kansas City, wherever 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 the circumstances may be. But. Take advantage. He got tanks on that truck. Like a hundred gallons on east side. If one of them things, what's the puncture or anything like that? We got to have pads mounted out there. It'll get in a drain system and all that. Plus, I don't think the streets are really capable of really. Having something like that coming up in that neighborhood. They, you know, and um. One thing I can say, he did widen his driveway to get it up in there. But still, I don't, I mean, um I'm just saying, I don't think it's really safe to have it in our neighborhood.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Are are you all gonna speak too? Okay, go ahead and come on up so we have everybody up here. Yes, ma'am.
Um my name is Teddy Scott and um my husband's coming up as well. And I lived in Mahoney Manor since nineteen ninety-seven.
And what's that address?
Um forty-nine seventeen Waverly Avenue. And he gave us a picture of this this truck. Um and we have, we do live on the hill, so it is kinda hard for us to get up there in the wintertime. But I don't, and I understand what he's saying when he says that there's other trucks all around the neighborhood. But we call all the time the zoning committee, asking them to do something about our neighborhood to keep it from going down. I moved there because it was a nice neighborhood, but now it's going in the drain. And I'm trying not to move because I own my house. And I just don't want that truck. I mean, nothing against them. They're nice. We don't have any problems with them, but. You got, you have zoning laws and you have a law that prohibits a tractor trailer being parked in. Uh residential area and I just want you guys to um. You know, do what you're here for to to block that because they're they're all around. And we need to, if we can stop this one, then we can get the other ones that are around the the neighborhood as well. That's my concern.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Uh I'm Sandy Ziola. I'm president of our neighborhood watch group, the Block Hawks, and our. Addition is Mahaney Manor. I've lived in my home since nineteen seventy-five. If Mr. Mahaney knew this was going over, he would just, he would not like it. Um I think it's an eyesore. We have a code and a good neighbor relation that says no semi tractors. In the neighborhood. And um it upsets me to see that. I understand where they're coming from, but it upsets me that they want a special permit. You know, what makes them so special compared to other people to try to keep this on the straight and narrow? We did go to a meeting that he had in his uh garage. There were fourteen people there. And uh Teddy's got the list.
And we we have the list as well.
Okay, and um so. That is how I feel. Like I said, I've lived in my home since nineteen seventy-five. I'm probably one of the original people in Mahaney Manor and I hate to see this. It's it's an eyesore, you know, and um. We try to keep our neighborhood nice and it still is nice. And I want it to stay that way. I don't want it to make it look like it's a uh. Trucking company.
Okay.
You know, and uh that's how I feel.
Okay, what's your address for please for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, five zero four seven Haskell.
Alright, thank you very much.
Uh huh, thank you.
Yes, sir. Your name and address.
Michael Scott. Um I'm at forty-nine seventeen Waverly Avenue. Uh I'm speaking because I uh it's just an eyesore to have a commercial truck in our neighborhood. Uh we have uh I have been living at that address since nineteen ninety ninety-seven. And it's hard to get uh Windot County to even do the streets or anything like that. A big commercial truck like that will cause a lot of road hazard and stuff like that and and really. It's just not a proper place for a commercial truck to be.
Alright, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Marlene Bray, uh forty-six thirty-six Greeley. I am also a president of my neighborhood group. Um what I want to say is we do have a code on this and I'm not understanding how. I talked to Gunner a little bit. He was saying they can get a special use permit, but I don't understand that compared to if it's in our codes, we need to start. Tightening our codes, knowing exactly, let these people know what's going on. Communication, I think, is. One of our big problems here in the Windot County area. Also, I was at the meeting in his garage. They are very nice people and I mentioned to them, why don't they ask some of these places where you can park trailers or trucks? Like the Kansas Turnpike up here on um I seventy, the rest area or several places around here. To try to park it there so they don't have to make that kind of a travel.
Okay.
We don't know, need those in our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. Anyone else besides this gentleman? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is George Peoples, near forty-nine eleven Waverly Avenue. And uh all I got to say is I hate to look out my window or my or my front porch and look off. And see that big old eighteen wall down there, you know, it just don't look good in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, sir. You again. Now, go ahead, please. Your name and address once again for the record.
Robert Carl, three six one nine North sixty-seventh Street. Uh just sitting here listening. I don't know why. I'm just compelled to stand up and defend a trucker. Um. I often hear people mention that, oh my, there's somebody parking their vehicle on their lawn. Or, oh no, they've got their work vehicle in their in their uh parking space or in their driveway. And to me, that's like, great. There's somebody supporting the local area. There's somebody trying to take care of their family. When I see an R, a big RV, when I see a a truck, a semi truck. Sitting in a parking spot or sitting in a driveway. I'm not thinking, oh my, there goes my real estate value because your real estate value is not going down because of semi truck in the driveway. That is not a reason why your value is gonna decrease. It's the character of the people there that are not gonna help. I do have to say that it. Just in support of this this family, being able to have their company. Vehicle in their driveway to support their family and their children so they don't have to risk their lives. While these other people sit in their houses comfy. I'm not saying anything against them or their character. I do not know them. I do not know any of these people. But when I see a truck, I see a good person. I was just personal experience. Um, you know, I I ordered to park for my vehicle because we hit a bunch of potholes in this area. We all know potholes are terrible sometimes. And it wrecked our vehicle. Um but if it wasn't for a trucker, I could not have gotten my part from Georgia to here in twenty-four hours. So I am in support of the truckers. I am in support of this family as well. Not saying they're not in support of truckers either. But of them having the ability to park it in their their driveway.
I understand. Thank you very much. And and I'm sorry to you, sir. Uh once you've spoken, I can't let you come back up. Otherwise, these things get out of here. Alright, anyone else? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the public portion. Wait a minute, let me see if there's anybody online. I've got one person, iPhone ninety-seven. iPhone ninety-seven.
Hi, my name is Monica Moses. My address is five zero two-two Waverly Avenue. How are you all today?
Good, thank you.
Um I've been in the neighborhood since nineteen ninety-two. And I have never seen a tractor trailer in that area. I've never parked in the area. I don't know if anybody else had, but I haven't. Um there is a code violation, section eight, four thirty-one and eight, four thirty-two. Um about a tractor trailer not being able, it's a violation. Um the tractor trailer weighs, a tractor trailer cab weighs ten thousand to twenty-five thousand pounds. So that's not good for a residential area. And that is why it should not be allowed in our neighborhood. He did get that driveway widened, but it's real close, if not on his neighbor's property line. And I know the neighbor, his neighbor personally, and he, I went up there and looked at it, okay? And opposed to miss, what Mr. Carl said, Mr. Carl, I don't know where you live, but we're trying to keep our neighborhood livable. And, and we, that is an eyesore. And that, that man has three vehicles in his driveway. And his kids are grown, so I don't know where his wife is getting this, she have to take her kids to school. And that, that track, that, that cab was parked up there winter, summer, all that. So I don't, that's just something that I don't know if it was, you know, fabricated, I don't know, but. I'm looking at the long haul of it. I live in this neighborhood. My house is, is as to what it was paid for, I just took a little bit of a loan out on it. But the thing is, I don't want to have to move. And I'm, that, that's all I have to say, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're gonna go close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director Hannigan, get his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resign. Again, we have a special use permit for a temporary use of land. Temporary use of land, special use permits are for two years max, they cannot be renewed. The intent is to give the property owner time to uh, find a permanent solution. In this case, the storage of semi-tractor trailer that is currently parked. Or that is typically parked, I should say, in the front lawn. This is in the comprehensive plan, Plan KCK area, Midtown Neighborhood. We received no letters of support prior to tonight, except for the two Ms. Parker mentioned earlier. Um, that came in after the final staff reports and agenda came in, we've received uh, as well, no letters of opposition, sorry. Uh, um, and except for the two earlier mentioned by Ms. Parker. Um, there are notices of violation on the property which prompted this special use permit case. Um, staff recommends denial, we do have conditions of approval if need be.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand?
I have a quick question.
Okay, Commissioner Beth?
Yeah, uh, I understand that this is a code violation for the special use permit to circumvent, right? To address a code complaint?
That's correct, so there's two ways to address this notice violation, remove the problem, or seek this specific special use permit.
Well, the, besides that, besides the code, code complaint, there's also a, a city ordinance in the traffic division. Uh, thirty-five four ninety-one that prohibits parking any vehicle over three-quarter ton. And as residential area on the street or off the street, or commercial vehicles. So it's, it's besides addressing the code violation, it's also a traffic violation. By city ordinance.
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions for Director Hand? Okay, seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Beth?
I move with deny special use twenty twenty-three dash one oh three, it doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. And um, it's in violation of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. It's been moved, excuse me, motion made for denial by Commissioner Beth, based on the reasons stated by the maker, is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
I say I if I want to deny it, sorry.
Yes, if you want to deny, you vote I.
I, yes, I.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of special use permit, one oh three. S- subject for the reasons listed passes eight in favor, none opposed.
Okay, thank you. This will be heard once again on February twenty-ninth in front of the Board of Commissioners, okay? Thank you, and thank you all for your testimony.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-three dash one oh eight. Olivia Marcos. Special use permit for a short-term rental at twenty-nine oh three West Forty-Fifth Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty-four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case contained in the official file. The notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Uh, Janet, would you let the record reflect and for your information, uh, Commissioner Mueller had to leave the meeting, he's not feeling well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, are you representing Mr. uh, Ms. Marcos?
Yeah, my name is Marcos Oliva.
Marcos Oliva?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, go ahead and give me your address and tell us what you want to do here.
Uh, my address is five one one five Garfield Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh three. And uh, we purchased this property last year and intending to rental, uh, so Airbnb. Um, we started renting it, but we never knew that, we got a permit as rental, but we never knew that you need a special permit for Airbnb. So after renting it for some, uh, for a couple of months. Um, the city came by and said that we have to go a different process, and that's why we're here right now.
Okay. Any questions for the applicants? Do you live close by to the, the property?
I don't, but uh, my brother, he's uh, where, he's an owner with me. And he lives like the next street over, like two minutes.
Okay, all right, so he's managing it if there's any issues, complaints, and, and do the neighbors have your in, information?
Actually, uh, the, uh, the person in charge of managing the, the property is my niece, Melanie. Uh, the neighbors, surrounding neighbors have their number, the contact, and we personally have. Uh, went through their door, knock, and they have our information and everything. We actually did the uh, neighborhood meeting. And I, nobody showed up, but um, I had like five phone calls that people agree, I'm not gonna lie. I don't remember the names, they told me they were gonna go to the meeting, so they could sign the, the paper and all that, but nobody showed up.
Okay, I have a question. Uh, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
Um, in the home, sorry, the home inspection report, there's a number of deficiencies.
What does that mean?
Um, when the home was, when the home was inspected.
Oh yeah, they're already taking care of.
All the electrical wiring, all the stuff, there's a number of them, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, it is, yeah, it is safe. Well, yeah, actually, I could have an inspector come tomorrow. And that way you could guys have proof or you got some, somebody, you know?
So nobody has come to see that the fixes have been taken care of?
No, they have not. I was not aware of that. The only thing they told me that I had need to get inspection. They gave me the report, we took care of them. I was not aware that I had to do a reinspection, but I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, is that, is that, I'm assuming that's what has to be done, is that correct?
Governor Hunter, we don't make them do a reinspection because if approved, he comes back in a year and we double check that. All those conditions of approval have been met. The condition of approval has to be met within six months. I believe in certain cases, when we see some structural deficiencies and stuff like that, we'll hold the approval until that building permit is closed.
Okay, thank you.
For this one, I think we're okay with a year.
Okay.
All right, uh, other questions for the applicant? You're worried you'll need to have a business license if this gets.
I do have a business license.
Okay, all right, I'm just channeling my former commissioner files here.
Don't worry.
She might be listening online, uh, so I want to make, I want to make her proud of.
I'm a licensed insurer, so.
Okay. So, thank you very much. Any other questions for this applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, come forward. Yes, ma'am. Could you step aside, sir? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Meredith Cusaris, my address is forty-nine twenty-five Metropolitan Avenue. I don't have anything against this person, but I just want to know clarification, what does short-term mean?
Gunner, you want to?
Governor Hunter, plain resign, the code that was adopted last May to find short-term rentals, everything, anything uh, less than thirty days stay. Everything after that would be a long-term rental.
Can I ask another question?
Go, no, she'll talk to me. Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask another question? What is the length of the uh, rental, like the term, like?
The ti- typically the.
The special permit.
Well, typically, uh, it depends on, depends on what happens tonight. It could be a year, it could be. Typically, if it's the first time, which is this, the maximum will be two years, but typically a year. And then we'll see how they do, and then based on if there's no complaints, things like that, then we'll do longer terms.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director Hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resign. Again, this is a special use permit for a short-term rental owner occupied. This is in the Rosedale area plan. Staff had received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. There are some older notices of violation which seem to have been ad- uh, addressed by the, that pen's wrong, it's the site over, sorry, it's not the word a lot. All right, yeah, that's been wrong, it should be whatever. Um, excuse me, um. Older notices of violation which have been addressed by the rehabilitation of the property by the, by the applicant, staff recommends approval for one year with conditions.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, it's a six people, maximum two cars off-street.
Six-two? Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Uh, motion to approve the petitioner's request for special use permit two zero two-three one zero eight. Subject to staff stipulations and comments for one-year approval.
All right, thank you. Motion for approval for one year made by Commissioner Jones, is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP one oh eight for one year. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, February twenty-ninth at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners. Okay, can you address it to him? Go, go ahead and just talk to him about it. Nope, talk to him. Thank you, go ahead, Janet.
Our next special use permit is SP twenty twenty-three dash one one five Deborah Sage. Special use permit to operate an automotive dealership at twenty-nine fifty-nine North Seventh Street Trafficway. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty-four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Yes, are you Ms. Sage?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and name and address, please.
Deborah Sage, twenty-nine fifty-nine North Seventh Trafficway, Kansas City, Kansas. I'm asking for approval for a special use permit to operate a small business of auto sales. No more than above five to seven cars at a time. Um, appointments only and online services. And I, um, on the property, there will be no repairs, no oil changes, no uh. Bodywork, the cars will be already ready where we placed them here.
And you run another business out of that location as well?
Angela.
Okay.
I, yes.
Your name, please, and address?
Sure, my name is Angela Howell, my home address is twenty-five seventeen North A Street, Kansas City, Kansas. I own the property at twenty-nine fifty-nine North Seventh Street Trafficway in Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay.
Uh, our primary business there is Anna's Billy Bistro, which is a restaurant. We're open Tuesday through Friday, um, eleven to three.
Okay, and then you're gonna sell a couple of cars?
Yeah, she's my cousin.
She's your cousin? Okay. All right, so you're gonna sell five to seven cars here and there, online, and you, you won't have any more than that? Online, in addition to your normal customer base?
Yeah.
And you have plenty of parking?
Yes.
And you understand the stipulations as far as some parking improvements and some other things that have to be done?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, come forward. Or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hannah, get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resign. Again, this is a special use permit for an auto dealership and an existing business. This is in the Northeast Area Plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. And again, there's a current notice of violation on the property that would be addressed by the pro- uh, by the proposed project. Um, staff recommends approval for two years with conditions, including enhanced landscaping, parking lot restriping, all in accordance with. Uh, the commercial design guidelines.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? You know, the more and more I think about your, your project, the fact that you can get a meal and buy a car, I mean, as long as it takes sometimes to buy a car. I'm kind of nice to have food available. Sometimes they hold you hostage all day long to get that car deal worked out. I'm liking this more and more that I think about it. Okay. Commissioner Easterwood, you have a question, or are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for the motion, I'm.
You're ready for the chairman to be quiet and, and move on, right, okay. Commissioner Easterwood, let's back to business.
Yes, I, I make a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Easterwood, is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, this.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Aye.
Secretary Parker, we can't hear you. Are you on mute? In the chamber, at least. Still nothing.
Cannot hear you, Janet. Okay, I'll go ahead and do it. Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Beth?
Aye.
Commissioner Ernst?
Aye.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Easterwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Aye.
I have seven votes in favor and none against, is that consistent with your count, Janet? Just nod. Just wave at me if that's correct. All right, seven to zero in favor, this will be heard once again on February twenty-ninth at seven PM. Before the Board of County Commissioners, okay? Thank you, sorry for that technical difficulty there. Uh, what do you want to do since we can't hear Janet? Do you want to call the next case?
You want to take a five-minute recess and fix this?
All right, I'm sorry, we'll have to do this, we'll take a five-minute recess to try to get our technical difficulties fixed.
Concept of buying a car, I'm having to drive it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, as soon as I get my, everybody back, Gunner and Commissioner Beth, we'll get going again.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Easterwood, you might have to raise your hand to get his attention.
Okay.
Commissioner Easterwood, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say, I didn't mean to cut you off, I, I, I can relate definitely to that.
Oh, no, 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 you're absolutely fine. No, 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 you're absolutely fine. You're absolutely fine, I thought, she's not gonna give me her vote at the end for chairman. You're gonna think he wastes too much time. This is one of those things where it's like your first impression of me, and I apologize, it's not going along. This is one of those things where it's like your first impression of me, and I apologize, it's not going along.
Well, it doesn't get any better, so.
And, and see, thank you Janet for that vote of confidence. It doesn't get any better. Love just keeps coming.
Well, Janet, I think kind of tried to ease me into this because the first email I got from her, it only had about. Four or five items on the agenda. Then I continued to get.
This is baptism by.
With more and more.
Yeah, this is baptism by fire, having twenty eight.
Well, and we've actually had more before, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're gonna get out of here at a reasonable time, I think, I hope. Okay, as soon as Gunner gets back, we're ready to roll.
Yeah, he just popped in here. I just unplugged and plugged into another port. I don't know what happened. I apologize for that, but.
That's all right. Director Hand, are you ready? All right, thank you folks for your patience for, uh, with that little technical glitch. We're gonna get back started. So Janet, we are on. Case number twenty twenty three dash one one six.
That's correct. Special use permit application SP twenty twenty three dash one one six, Donna Barnett. Special use permit to operate a short term rental at twenty three eleven North Hundred and Fourth Terrace. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnett, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please give us your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do here.
Sure. My name is Donna Barnett. My address is nine ten Northwest Princeton Square in Bentonville, Arkansas. And I grew up in this house at, uh, twenty three eleven North Hundred and Fourth Terrace. It's my family house. I currently purchased it for my siblings so that I can stay in town when, um, when I come into town, which I come about twice a month. What I'd like to do is Airbnb it when I'm not in town and then stay there when I am in town. Uh, so I'm asking for that short term rental lease so that I could do that. I do know most of the neighbors on the block because I grew up in this neighborhood. And so I'll make sure that I keep up to the standards of it. I do have a brother and a sister that live, both of them live about five minutes away. Um, that is gonna help me property manage it. And then, of course, my neighbors will have my contact information as well as my siblings in case anything happens.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the audience. Anyone who want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll close that and we'll go to Director Hannah get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director Planning resign. Again, this is a special use permit for a short term rental. This is not the, uh, non-owner occupied. Sort of, uh, this is in the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan. We received no letters of support, no letters in opposition, no notices of violation. I will quickly point out that two months ago, we had a short term rental on the same block down the street. That application, as per our ordinance, came in, uh, before this one. So this one was on hold while the other one was being heard. It was recommended and ultimately was, uh, withdrawn after being recommended denied by the city planning commission. At which point we let Ms. Barnett know that she could move forward with this application on that block. Again, that code requires, uh, or limits it to one per block. Uh, with that, staff recommends approval for one year with conditions, maximum of seven people, three cars off street.
All right, thank you. Uh, any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit two zero two three dash one one six. Subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood? Ernst?
Aye, slow as I am.
Jones?
Darren?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I'm sorry, aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval. Of SP twenty twenty three one one six. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on February twenty ninth before the Board of County Commissioners at seven PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty three dash one one eight. Justin Appleberry with the Davenport. Special use permit to operate a drinking establishment at four oh one North Sixth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Appleberry?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Go ahead and introduce yourself, please, and give us your name and address.
My name is Justin Appleberry, two two zero one zero West one hundred and twenty second Street. That's in Olafah, Kansas. The, uh, property is at four oh one North Sixth Street in Kansas City, Kansas. Keep it short for everybody. We're opening up a sports bar right there in the hard Strawberry Hill. We're excited to be part of it and help it grow into a, you know, a hotspot in the community and. Just really happy to invest our dollars and our time into helping that area grow.
Okay, thank you. Any experience doing this before in any other locations?
Uh, I have a couple of different other businesses that I run. Uh, Mike has run, uh, his own bar and has worked extensively in the industry as well.
Okay, and Mike is your manager, you're gonna be your manager?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, operating manager.
I'm sorry, all right, great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come forward. Okay, not seeing anybody, we'll close that and we'll go to Director Hannah get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, uh, Gunner Hand, Director Planning resign. Again, this is a special use permit for a drinking establishment. Um, I'll make the note here that it was not noticed for either an event or, um, live entertainment. So some bars request that, some don't. So I just wanted to make that clear. This is just for the drinking establishment itself. We do have a low bar. Low threshold for live entertainment. This is in the central area plan. Staff received no letter of support, no letters in opposition. There is a, um. Uh, there are old notices of violations, uh, for this property that are associated with the previous operator, not this current one. Uh, they should all be addressed through the rehabilitation redevelopment of projects or this project in particular. Um, while the staff report says one, staff would make the recommendation in. Uh, that the commission in their motion change it for an approval of two years with conditions. I think we had a typo in our staff reports, I apologize for that.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve special use permit two zero two three dash one one eight. Um, please note the change is one to two years. Is that correct, Gunner?
Right.
Um, subject to staff stipulation, the comments.
Thank you. Motion for approval made by Commissioner Ward for two years, subject to staff stipulations and comments. Is that a second Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood? Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP one one eight for two years. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor, none opposed.
All right, thank you. February twenty ninth, seven PM, one more time. Bring Mike for backup.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty three dash one twenty. Houston Defoe with the Blue Palm LLC. Special use permit for a drinking establishment at two oh four Orchard Street in the downstairs portion. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Go ahead, give us your name and address, please. Tell us what you want to do.
My name is Houston Defoe. Our business address, two oh four Orchard Street. And we're, uh, putting in a tiki lounge. It'll be called Blue Palm. So it's going in the old Mockingbird Lounge location. Uh, it's actually a mixed use building, so we'll have a short term rental upstairs in the apartment. So it's a two bedroom apartment. I mean, what sounds more exciting than overlooking the downtown view and a short term rental and an Airbnb? So I thought that'd be fun above a tiki lounge. We're looking to have a, uh, higher end cocktail lounge. There's a lot of dive bars in Strawberry Hill, which is a lot of fun, but we kind of want to add another element to the neighborhood. Um, spent a lot of time talking to all of our neighbors. Everybody is very supportive. We know a lot of the business owners in the area as well. We're excited to see the Davenport go in as well. Um, so I mean, short and easy. We just want to have a nice, higher scale, higher end place for cocktail lounge. We're not going to be open very late. Uh, twelve thirty, one o'clock at the latest, and then we'll shut down for the night. So.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone who want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Dan Doty, two five two five North Seventy Third Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh nine. I am partners to, uh, Raquel Danner and Houston Defoe. And I just want to make a point that we have made a very conscious effort to go around to the neighbors to make sure they know we are not gonna have anything loud outside. Anything might distract from their, their neighborhood. Uh, we have cleaned up the space, uh, pretty impeccably from what it was previously. And, uh, we just want to put a little more polish on the neighborhood possible.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will close that. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hannah get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director Planning resign. Again, this is another special use permit for a drinking establishment. This one is also in the central area plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Again, there's some older notices of violation on this property, which would all be addressed by the, um, reopening of the business. Again, those were all associated with the previous owner slash operator. Uh, this one also has a typo, so by motion, staff would recommend, uh, that the planning commission approve this for two years with conditions. Um, uh, including trash enclosure, a couple of other things, some landscaping here and there. The associated short term rental was held over. That will be heard hopefully as soon as next month. Uh, that was mentioned by the applicant. Again, so those are two separate special use permits. I would also note that this case. Uh, going back to one of our comments during the board's zoning appeals, this property has a parking variance on it, so no parking is required for this business.
All right, so we're only approving the, the bar?
The bar.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit two zero two three dash one two zero with the change from one to two years. Uh, subject to staff stipulation, the comments.
Thank you. Motion made for two years by Commissioner Ward for approval. Is that a second Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood? Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP one twenty for two years. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. One more time, February twenty ninth, seven PM before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Our next special use permit is SP twenty twenty three dash one twenty one. Jessica Moreno with Next Guest KC. Special use permit to operate a short term rental at six eleven Douglas Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Y dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Moreno, I have you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, give us your name, address, and tell us what about your project.
Yes, hello, my name is Jessica Moreno. My address is two zero zero six Wyandotte Street, apartment three zero six. Uh, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one zero eight. And I am wanting to obtain a short term rental license for a property I purchased at six eleven Douglas Avenue. Um, just to kind of give you all a little bit of my background, uh, so back in twenty eighteen, prior to the pandemic, I. Spent an entire year traveling around the world. I went to thirty three countries while working remotely and staying in short term rentals. Um, all around the world. And so I got to experience Airbnbs in, in so many different ways and so many different countries and was able to see. Uh, what really makes a good short term rental and what makes a not so good short term rental. Um, and I, I was really moved by my experiences. Um, so the day I returned home from my worldwide trip. I started a business and I knew that this is where I wanted my career to go. Um, so I have been working in the, uh, Airbnb industry now for the last five years. Here in Kansas City, I'm a small business owner of Next Guest KC. Um, it is an Airbnb cleaning and management company. Uh, I currently have about fifteen employees and over the last five years I've helped run over, uh, one hundred. Uh, short term rentals in the metro area. So I have a very thorough understanding of what it takes to run a safe and successful short term rental. And my experience and knowledge, uh, in the industry will be very beneficial, uh, to the successful operation of this property. And it's special use that I am seeking today. Um, and since I started my business in May of twenty nineteen, it is, it has always been, uh, my dream really to own and operate my own. Um, STR and I've worked really, really hard, um, to get to this point, to be able to make, uh, the purchase of this home. Uh, and I'm just hopeful that I may receive approval today so that I can have an opportunity to fulfill this dream.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone who wants to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, raise your hand or come forward. We have Gabriel. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Gabriel, and give us your name and address, please.
Yes, hello, my name is Gabriel Casares. Uh, my address is one zero eight North Seventy Sixth Street. I am opposed to this and the philosophy of she, this lady is buying up. Houses that normal people can buy for themselves and is planning to rent them out, which drives up home prices. And it vertical, it creates vertical, uh, integration and monopolization. Of housing and any elastic demand that people need at all times, basically.
Okay, anything else?
That's basically it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone else want to speak in favor or in opposition to this case? Please raise your hand or come forward. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Gunner Hand, Director Planner, resigning. Um, again, this is a special use permit for a short term rental, non-owner occupied. This is in the uh plan KCK comprehensive plan area. Sort of in the Rosedale area, just outside the Rosedale area plan, but I would call this probably Shawnee Heights more accurately. Um, we received uh no letters of support, no letters of opposition. There are no notices of violation on the property. Um, staff recommends approval for one year with conditions, maximum of five people, two cars off street of particular note and related to a comment by Commissioner Ward earlier. This one does have a structural issue on it that we will wait and hold uh the approval until it is fixed. Uh, but typically we'll get either people come back when they renew and we do, and we'll check conformance because they have to get another inspection at that at that renewal point. Very often, um, people send us a picture and say, hey, we fixed this one here. It is or whatever. So something like that kind of in the in between. Uh, but this one in particular, uh, because it's a structural issue, we'll hold it until uh until it's fixed. Operate this safely.
All right. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve a special use permit two zero two three dash one two one. Uh, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
A motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward, subject to staff stipulations and comments. Uh, is that a second Commissioner? Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Hmm.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this application for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, February twenty ninth at seven P M. Before the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty three dash one two two. Andrew C. Mall, special use permit to operate a short term rental at sixty one fifteen Oak Grove Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty four, the application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
Yes. Mr. Mall and I serve on several committees together through the Realtor Organization, and we have discussed short term rentals at length.
Hey? Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mall, I have you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please start off with your name and address.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Mall and I uh live at four seven seven six Black Swan Drive in Shawnee, Kansas.
And go ahead and tell us about your project, please.
So uh, this property, uh, my wife and I purchased uh back in two thousand four, uh, and it has been in our family since. Um, I moved my uh in-laws in there in two thousand eighteen and my father-in-law passed away in twenty twenty. Um, based on him passing away, it's been a little difficult to take care of things and making sure the place stays up uh up to keep. Um, I take care of all of that and uh we were just trying to make some ends meet. Um, make sure that my mother-in-law can stay in uh that home. And so uh we are uh wanting to do a short term rental in the basement area that uh when we purchased the home was already basically set up as a separate living space. Um, uh, and um, so that is what we're looking to do.
All right. Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, Commissioner Ernst.
I have two questions, sir. One, on January twenty third, I came by and your sign was down. It was still on the premises, but it was down right after snow. After that, it disappeared and I never saw where it was put back up. Is there a reason that you didn't put the sign up?
No, the sign is actually, when I uh had my call with uh the planner back in September, I asked where I needed to place that sign and she told me I needed to place it in my yard. Um, when I discovered that the sign, my father had actually put that sign out. When I found out it was not actually placed in my yard and was placed at the road, which is not my property, uh, I moved it to my property where I was instructed to put it where it has been ever since.
Which I'm not sure that's our intent because what you're saying is your yard is not visible by anyone driving by. You'd have to go up onto the property to be able to see that sign.
Oh, I agree, and that's why I asked the question. So when I asked, uh, oh, I would have to look up that the initial uh conversation. I I specifically asked the question and that planner actually responded to me, yep, no one's going to see that sign.
Okay, I'll leave that to Gunner to sort out. Uh, there's a lot of debris along the fence line, along the street. Is that the reason that's not cleared up or?
That's bucket on my property. I don't, that I believe that's Steve Howard's property.
It's the entrance to six six one 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 five.
Actually, no, that's a shared driveway, so the property address that we are speaking of is a landlocked property.
Okay, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Uh, Mr. Ball, can you address the parking or the uh the shared agreement driveway issue since it came up in the questions from Commissioner Ernst? Can you explain how that works between you and the neighboring property owner?
Sure. So first off, uh, parking is um specific in the home rules that they must park uh in the driveway next to the next to the actual short term rental. Uh, and there is signage there to help with that. We we were very cognizant of that, making sure we got folks back there to park in the right spot. Uh, I have had that easement agreement with uh Steve Howard since I purchased uh the home from actually him. Um, his his parents lived there uh prior to we uh us purchasing that home. Uh, I don't recall exactly the the terminology of it, but basically is we have access to that driveway to gain access to our home um to that property. We have never had parking issues. Actually, it's about a five hundred foot driveway. Um, and all of the parking is on our premises and we have never had any parking issues.
Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes, that has that access uh easement been recorded so that it stays in place if the ownership of the adjoining property uh changes hands?
I do not know. I have not, I have not done the 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 search for it. I know that when we uh purchased the property that we had to have a written statement from him uh from Steve Howard saying that that easement was in place.
Any follow up, Commissioner Easterwood?
Well, I think it would be uh uh advisable to make sure that it's recorded so that again, if the ownership changes with the uh Jason party uh the Jason property that there's no issues with gaining access to your property.
All right, thank you. Any fa, any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no more questions, we'll go ahead and go to the audience. Anyone who wants to speak in favor or in opposition? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Your name and address.
I'm Frances Howard, sixty one thirteen Oak Grove.
Uh huh.
I live right next door. And that's there, my easement goes into the property. The e, there's an easement. It's not a driveway. I have a driveway that everybody uses, but that's a easement.
Okay.
So I want to know how I'm going to stop some of this traffic from coming in that I don't want.
Okay, we'll see if we can get you an answer. When you say traffic that you don't want, what what are you speaking to? Are you talking about anybody that visits the property or?
Well, visitors or people that are going to live there. And I have another five acres behind them
Uh huh.
that I don't want anybody messing with.
Sure.
But how am I going to keep this from happening?
Okay, but people are living there now and they're, they have access?
Well, it's his stepmother. I guess stepmother.
Um, I think it said mother-in-law.
Yeah, and she's a nice lady. I have nothing against her. But I don't see where he's going to rent out part of that house and then let her live on the other part.
Okay, we'll get you an answer. Okay?
You will.
Well, I'm going to ask as soon as, as soon as we see if there's anybody else that wants to speak. Yes, I'll go back. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to speak as well or? Okay, go ahead, please. Your name and address.
I got a little bit here. Uh, my name is Meredith Casares. This is my mom. My address is forty nine twenty five Metropolitan Avenue. Um, the Mr. Mall had a neighborhood meeting, but I wasn't aware of that and my mom didn't go to it. So I just want to say that I'm against him turning this uh property into a short term rental because we've lived, my mom's lived in that house for fifty years and that house that he lives in was my mom's uncle's house. And Steve is the cousin of my mom. So it's all like a little family thing right there, but um the the she's just an older elderly woman and she lives by herself. She has ten acres back there. And it doesn't, you can't see the house from the road. You as well, you can't see sixty one fifteen from the road. So having all the extra, um, the short term is what is the concern? When you have you know, somebody coming for two nights, six people, however many people, um two, three nights, that's coming and going. We don't know these people, you know, it should be a just a resident. It should be a s, a family residency, not a short term or Airbnb. Um, my mom, you know, I'm just there trying to protect my mom. She lives there by herself, ten acres. We help her, my brother and I help her. And the, her driveway goes up to her house, but you could go on sixty one fifteen driveway also from my mom's and they do access my mom's driveway a lot to get back to that property. That's what she was talking about.
Because that, is that the only way to get to the property?
It's not the only way, but Steve Howard has the driveway from the street. His house is in front and then the house sixty one fifteen is in the back.
Okay.
So they have to share that driveway. But it also goes, my mom's driveway meets their driveway.
So is there a third property out there that's Mr. Steve, Mr. Steve Howard's?
No, it's my mom's actually. She has property behind her house that's landlocked also.
Okay.
And it's five acres back there, so we have to go on that easement to get back there.
Okay, gotcha.
So we are totally opposed of this Airbnb short term rental.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor or in opposition? I've got Aleah online. Aleah?
Hello?
Yes.
Good evening. I just want to say that I'm
Your name and address.
Yes, Aleah Casares, one oh eight North Seventy Sixth Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one one one.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that um I'm also opposed to that. Um, there's just a lot of traffic through that area. That's my grandmother in the audience. Um, and Steve Howard has also been opposed to the extra traffic. He's fine if, you know, it's just one family living there and it's just, you know, them coming and going, but um, we have spoken to him and he is also against the amount of traffic that a short term rental would bring there. I also just don't think it's a good idea for short term, a short term rental to be with an elderly woman in the same house. Um, I'm also concerned for that, but my main concern is my grandmother.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting and we'll get Mr. Mall back up. Have a question. Just want you to answer a question with regard to the easement. Um, as far as the the amount of traffic that's coming and going, is there's only one person living in the property now?
Well, my mother-in-law does live there, then I'm there daily, probably once or twice a day. Uh, and then my wife is probably over there a couple of times a week. Um, my mother-in-law does watch our grandson or her grandson, our our youngest son every once in a while. We're there, I mean, it's it's ten acres. Uh, I've, it's my family home. The reason we still own that property is my wife and I plan to uh come back there someday. Um, and so, um, yeah, we we've maintained it, so we're there quite a bit.
All right, so you have you have ten acres where you're at.
Correct.
Any problem, any problems up till now uh with the neighbors and accessing the 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 property?
No, um, it's always been very cordial, like everybody says. I think they, I think um uh Fran needs to actually come onto my property to get to the back five her five acres, and so I've never had a problem with that. Um, that's never been an issue. Um, you know, uh, I've been there for since two thousand four and and not that I'm aware of, I've had any issues with my neighbors and I certainly haven't uh made any complaints about their properties or anything.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hannah and get his comment.
Mr. Chair, I actually have a question for the applicant.
Okay, go ahead.
Just as a point of clarification, is through the testimony tonight, I think I heard that there's two driveways that can access six one one five Oak Grove, one that goes through six one one three Oak Grove. Is there also one from six one two nine Oak Grove?
So, yeah, I think there is some confusion there. So Fran's driveway goes to her home, but it has a little leg that touches the easement driveway that is a part of six one two nine.
Okay. Yep. Understood, thank you.
Did I clarify everything? Okay, thank you. Okay, Director Hand, go ahead.
All right, uh, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resigning. This is a special use permit for a short term rental. Um, technically non-owner occupied, so this is one of those ones that I think we did not foresee when when the uh planning commission, board commissioners adopted the short term rental ordinance last May in twenty twenty three. Um, of particular note, again, we're talking about essentially well, there's two things here. So while this, while the applicant does on the property, they do not live on the property, their mother-in-law does, and so the mother-in-law has nothing to do with the short term rental ordinance. The intent of the code was if you live in your house and you want to rent out a room, you don't have to go through the S U P process. So that's one reason why we're going through the S U P process. The second one is we never foresaw where we would have a land link locked parcel and you would have to drive through someone else's property to get to your property. So staff uh does share some of the concerns that we are effectively turning half of the primary residents into a business and customers will drive through that access easement to get to it. So there are no standards for that currently in the short term rental. That is certainly something we're going to look into and raise when we have our annual review of that short term rental ordinance in May uh as planned. So with that, I'll continue. Uh, this is in the plan KCK conference of plan area and the in the turn ever, there's been no support uh bef, uh, no opposition before this evening. There are no notices of violation on the property. Uh, staff does recommend denial uh due to that access issue. We do have conditions of approval if need be, including um a maximum of three people, two cars off street.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Uh, Commissioner Ernst, did you want anything dressed about your concerns about the way staff addressed the signage or anything like that?
I would just ask that Gunner would look into it. I'm pretty sure he will.
All right, thank you. Um, any questions for Director Hand?
No.
Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Ernst? I'm sorry, you're muted, sir.
Switching places with Mr. Miss Eastwood and I'm trying to Switching places with Mr. Miss Eastwood, and I'm trying to turn her mic on. Uh, I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission, recommend denial of petition SP twenty twenty-three dash one two two. Uh, subject to, it does not fulfill factors six and seven. And neighborhood opposition.
All right, thank you. Motion is made for denial by Commissioner Ernst for the reasons stated by the maker. Is that a second Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes, it is.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair, you can't recommend denial due to neighborhood opposition.
Uh, I think he said factors five and six, six and seven?
Six and six and seven, as recommended by staff.
All right. Any discussion on the motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Hi.
Ward?
Nice.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Easterwood?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of this application for the reasons listed in the staff report passes six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again February twenty-ninth at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next special use permit is SP twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one, Guy Holbert. Special use permit for Penske Truck Leasing Rental and Repair at eleven North James Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty-four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holbert. I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Give us your name, address, and tell us about your project.
Uh, yes, sir. This is Guy Holbert with Penske Truck Leasing. I live at forty-eight oh four West Jim Mitchell Trail in Cup Colleyville, Texas, excuse me. Um, our project is proposed for eleven North James Street in that Kansas City, uh, Kansas. And uh, uh, our project is to basically renovate and update the facility uh, that my understanding has been uh operated as a truck maintenance and repair facility for quite some time now. Uh, we were told during the the uh application process that SUP would be required because of our expansion of the existing use. Our plans are to uh renovate the facility, um, add a truck wash, uh, meet all code requirements. Update the fencing, add landscaping sidewalks, whatever's required by code. And uh, we will continue to operate hopefully as a truck maintenance and repair facility into the future.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions for the applicants? Seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone wanna speak to this case in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Han to get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Resigning, this is a special use permit for truck leasing maintenance and repair facility. As the applicant noted, this was a legal non-conforming use. When they came in to request the expansion, it triggered the SUP requirements that the Board of Commissioners adopted in twenty sixteen, I believe it was. Uh, this is in the Armoredale Area Plan. Staff received no letters of support, no letters in opposition. Uh, as can be expected for a use like this, um, there has been a history of police calls, but nothing out of the ordinary. Staff recommends approval for two years with conditions, again, following all the commercial design guidelines.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, uh, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve special use permit two zero two four dash zero zero one. Subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second Commissioner Easterward, Easterwood?
This is.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Easterwood?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion recommend approval of special use permit twenty twenty-four dash one for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again February twenty-ninth, seven P M before the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the special use permits. We're gonna move on to the Platts down. Platt twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine, Richard Donahue. Preliminary and final plaque to create two industrial lots at four fifteen Osage Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty-four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue, I'm, are you in the audience? I've got a Darren Amon.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Darren Amon with Bartlett and West, representing the owner and applicant for this application. Uh, we would like to kindly request a deferral of discussion and vote on this for two months uh, until April. Uh, I get get more into that if you would like, but is that a possibility for this evening?
Okay, so you're requesting a sixty-day holdover?
Correct.
All right, let me see if there's anybody in the audience that came to speak to your case and we'll see if we can dispose of it pretty quickly. All right, anyone in the audience wanna speak to this case in favor or in opposition, please raise your hand or come forward. I'm seeing no one, so I'm gonna go to Director Hand. Are you okay with a sixty-day holdover request?
Staff has no issues with the sixty-day holdover.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, can I get a motion? Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move uh to hold over Platt two zero two three dash zero three nine for sixty days. Uh, pursuant to the applicant's request.
All right, thank you. Motion is made for a sixty-day holdover, which would be what's meeting, Janet?
Um, it will be April the April the eighth.
All right, so motion is for holdover to the April eighth meeting. Any, uh, is there a second? And I have a second online, which goes to Mr. Ernst, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Is that sixty days?
Uh, the April eighth meeting, what is that sixty days, Janet, or?
I don't think it's sixty days.
Yeah, that'd be March, April. So.
Does it have to be sixty days?
That would be sixty days.
Well, it'd be under sixty.
Well, it's just under, so uh can we just do a holdover till April eighth? That's fine with us. Is that okay to get to the April eighth meeting or do we need to go?
We basically don't do it by days. We do it by months.
All right.
Okay.
So it'd be a month.
For purposes of the motion, if it's okay with Mr. War- uh, Commissioner Ward, we're gonna say uh, hold over till the April eighth meeting. There you go. All right, is that okay with you, Commissioner Ernst is the second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Hi.
Ward?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Easterwood?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over this application until the April eighth meeting. As per the request of the applicant's representative passes, seven in favor, none opposed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two applications that we're gonna hear together. A plat application, Platt twenty twenty-three dash zero four one, Willie Lanier with Lanier United LLC. Final plat to divide the property for a mixed-use redevelopment of the Jack Rudin Center, which includes apartments, retail, commercial, and an event center at five hundred Minnesota Avenue. And plain review application, PR twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine. And that is a preliminary and a final development plan for the same use at the same address. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty-four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Are you representing the applicant?
I guess I am.
Yes, go ahead, please. Your name and address.
Yes, hi, I'm Rich Canis with NSPG Architects. My address is three six one three West one hundred and fifty-fifth Street over in Park, Kansas. Uh, we, were you able to pull up that uh thing that I mean about presentation? Uh, we are uh in full agreement with the uh conditions uh set forth by the staff. Due to the lateness of the hour, I'll offer a quick uh two and a half minute presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, and then we can move forward from there.
I didn't get your email, so I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna wing it then. Uh, there we go. Uh, so uh, this site uh is surrounded uh with the uh federal courthouse to the north. Uh, there's the existing BPU parking structure to the west, uh, along with the Hilton Garden Inn. Uh, and the Merc uh co-op uh directly to the south. Uh, this is the site of the existing Riordan Center. Uh, we're proposing to demolish this and put a mixed-use project uh in its place. Uh, on the southeast corner, uh, we would uh have our mixed-use project with the commercial space uh fronting along Minnesota and wrapping the corner. Uh, and then above that would be a hundred units of uh apartments, uh, studio, single-family and two-bedroom, all with their own uh balcony or patio. Uh, over on the north, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of the site would be the uh event center, which is seventy-five hundred square feet, uh, multi-purpose for large events and uh also for uh sports-related things. Up in the northeast corner, uh, we have proposed a second phase, which would mimic uh the similar conditions of mixed-use building on the southeast corner. All of those in the middle are surrounding a central green. Uh, over on the very east side of the project, uh, it is the Heritage Trail, uh, which is a a ten-foot wide trail system, uh, where we're enhancing with landscaping, providing areas for opportunities to place art as well. Uh, the uh parking will be accommodated in the existing BPU parking structure. There'll be a hundred spaces there along with the uh uh angled parking spaces uh on North Fifth Street. Uh, the uh, also there is a mid-block uh pass through walkway so that we're encouraging activity uh and connectivity uh through the building where uh he's showing the hand right now. And that uh goes all the way towards the north, over to the federal courthouse itself. Uh, we're very uh pleased that this uh, this type of facility will be able to increase activity in the area, provide connectivity, enhance the public realm. Uh, and support the existing businesses in the area, the Merc and and some of the other things that we're really gonna help activate this area by uh the in- incoming residents. Uh, and that uh in a, in a quick nutshell is a project, it's eight stories total. Uh, and all the floors are the same. Up on the top floor, the eighth floor, we do have a uh, an amenity terrace on the southeast corner, which will have uh the uh seating areas, fire pits, uh grill stations and the like. It's right above that uh white portion that you can see on the screen. So I'm sorry, we're on a different elevation, but uh all, all of that. So we're very pleased that the uh uh elevation here on the front also has a differentiating the uh commercial spaces on the lower level through the use of bricks, signs, canopies, lighting, uh, and uh clear floor-to-floor glaze. So in a nutshell, we're uh very pleased uh with the outcome of this project. We've got uh very designed uh use of materials to create interest to in the facades. The facade design wraps all the way around, so we have a true four-sided design on all uh uh elevations of the building. Uh, and so with that, we'll open it up for any questions. Mr. Lanier, uh, the developer is here uh to answer any questions as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Their applicant's representative, excuse me. I'm not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and go to the audience. Anyone in the audience wanna speak to this case in favor or in opposition? I have one hand, Reon Realty online, so Reon Realty, go ahead, uh, introduce yourself, please, with name and address.
Hi, my name is Samir Nair, uh, Senior Vice President of P Three Hotel Group. Um, we own the Hilton Garden Inn, uh, that's adjacent to this development. The address there is five two zero Minnesota Avenue. Um, and we, we received outreach from miscellaneous regarding this development. Uh, we've had a few different discussions, but this is the first time that we're seeing the full scope of what's going on here. We obviously have a business and invested significant monies in the area. Um, so any material change to what's happening is gonna impact us both from a construction phase and finished project. Uh, if you do notice, the square footage is being significantly reduced of the convention center. Um, and there are some easements, HVAC components and others uh that tie us to the Riordan Center. Uh, so you know, we really like to be made aware of everything that's happening and understand the intricacies of how this relates to our business there. Um, you know, before we decide or have a, have an idea of what's gonna impact our business, basically.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Not as of right now.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else wanna speak? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Pastor Cedric Rowan of the First Baptist Church, which is right down the street here at Fifth and Nebraska, which we would be a a neighbor to this adjoining project of which we've been known about for several years, and I've spoken before in behalf of the project. I rise to do that once again tonight, the lateness of the hour. Look forward to this project, along with other amenities that have been spoken to. We encourage full support from the city to make this thing happen. We need activity. We need some newness down here on this end of the city. I heard a lot of projects out west tonight. It's sure nice to see something down here on the east side. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, almost morning. I'm Melissa Williams, six twenty-six Everett Avenue, Turtle Hill area. I am also a active minister at First Baptist Church. And I am also the newly elected president of the Merc Board of Directors. I stand here to say, let's do this. We are in support of that. We want to um be self-sustaining, because as you guys know, the unified government helps out to have the debt, the store downtown. Uh, we've pulled together an advisory council and we are determined to be active in there, but we need the help of people. And if there are no people around, there probably won't be a lot of shopping. And so I'm asking for your support of this project. Uh, he's been really open with us. And we want to support the, the apartments and the retail centers there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wanna speak to the project? All right, seeing no more, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han to get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this plat is being heard in conjunction with Plan Review twenty twenty-three dash zero three nine against the redevelopment redevelopment of the Riordan Center, kinda two-point-oh, if you will. This is a permanent development plan, final development plan and final plat. Again, uh, as noted by the applicant, we're looking at a hundred market rate. Uh, a hundred units, seven thousand square feet of retail, seven houses. uh a hundred units, seven thousand square feet of retail, seven and a half uh square feet of conference convention multipurpose center. This is the downtown area plan. For this evening, staff received no letters of support or opposition. There are no notices violation of the property. Uh, staff recommends approval with conditions, including the hindrance adherence, excuse me, to the uh mixed use design guidelines.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Janet, we'll need two mess, uh motions, correct, plat and plan review in that order?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. I will stand for motion when ready for the plat. Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes, uh, I move uh that we approve the plat uh designed with staff recommendations.
All right, uh Commissioner Easterwood has moved for approval of plat twenty twenty three dash zero four one. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Ward has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this plat with the conditions passes, seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I'll need one on the plan review?
Yes.
It wasn't a request, but I was asking for one. Commissioner Easterwood?
I move uh for approval.
Okay, motion for approval for plan review application twenty twenty three dash zero three nine made by Commissioner Easterwood. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Did you get that aye?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of Plan Review PR thirty nine subject to the conditions and the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
And the plan review will go to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, that'll be on February twenty ninth at seven PM. Thank you, gentlemen.
We have two more applications that'll be heard together. Plan review application PR twenty twenty three dash zero four four Kelly Winkle. Preliminary development plan for the KCKCC Downtown Campus at six forty five Nebraska Avenue, eleven oh one North Seventh Street and six hundred, six twelve, six twenty four, six thirty two and six forty six State Avenue. It has a corresponding master plan amendment, MPL twenty twenty three dash zero two zero master plan amendment from downtown mixed use, downtown area plan to civic downtown area plan for the same use at the same addresses. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated February twelve, twenty twenty four, the application of their documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case contained in the official file, the publication in the echo for the master plan amendment and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. We're the, we're the last one, so hopefully this will, this will be brief. Um, so Chairman and uh and the Planning Commission, uh, my name is Peter Ho. I am representing both the applicant and the owners. Um, the owners are um Kansas City Community College, as you can see up here on the screen, uh Swope Health and also Community America Credit Union. This is a very special project um that really needs to come down to downtown Kansas City, Kansas. Um, I don't know if Director Hand can show the um aerial and the site plan. The site borders um State Avenue on the south, Nebraska on the north, uh Seventh Street on the west and Sixth Street on the east, so very close, about a block and a half from the prior um applications uh tonight in the uh prior project. Um, so I've, some of you may, uh may be familiar with the site uh at the very southwest corner of uh state and or actually the northeast corner of state and Seventh is the Seventh Street um old church, which has been abandoned. And um next to it is a series of other old buildings which are now um actually demolition has started, um starting on the east side, uh moving west. Uh, there will be one small building, six twelve State Avenue, which will remain. Uh, right now it's gonna be used um for storage of some of the artifacts from the church, which is part of the agreement with the Landmarks Commission to um restore and include some of these elements in the new building design. So on the site plan, on the, on the left-hand side, you see that kind of boomerang shaped building that's planned to be a four-story uh building owned by the partners, so the college, Swope Health and Community America. And then the um the bottom of that L, that's a one-story um advanced manufacturing lab as well as commercial construction technology. So um being a part of the community college, they want to bring both tech education in the downtown uh Kansas City, Kansas. Um, there's also a partnership with the local um high school for students to come and take courses as part of this program. So it's um bringing both uh high school and bringing um high school students into uh volt tech education, um transitioning into the uh community college programming. Um, we also um see on that north part, you'll see a uh building, a square building shaded there. That's the Willa Gill Building, which today I believe operates two uh social service programs uh for the community and that will remain in place. And all the services will operate during uh the entire uh demolition and construction of the project, so that will not be interrupted at all. And then the rest of the site, you'll see parking, uh and we also have a small ITM or ATM island for Community America, which is at the uh lower right-hand corner. You'll see that on the site plan. And um is there any other questions or comments about the project right now?
Okay, questions from the commission to the applicant? I'm not seeing any, so, okay. Does that conclude your presentation?
Uh, it does. Um, we did have a chance to read the staff report um that, that was put out by, by um the, the planning department, so we do just have a couple of comments about that staff report, um items two and three on the staff report. Hopefully um it does recommend a, approve of our project, um following the certain uh stipulations and items two and three, which relate to the Landmarks Commission. Uh, those items have been closed, so they're, they're, they've been approved and closed, so we were just wondering if you do approve the project, if those could be removed um from the uh staff report.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Two and three? All right.
Correct, items two and three.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this case in favor or in opposition?
Wasn't sure I could do twi- twice.
Different case, yes you can.
William, six twenty six Everett. I'm not coming as a Merk prep board president, but you know, it's part of it too. As a resident and as a person who has a masters in higher education and works for a college, not KCK. Yes, I am in favor of this happening here downtown. Think it'd be exciting to see not only uh the development and seeing newness across the street, but to see students come in and young and old, and what really thrills me is a health and wellness center because right now if you're just not walking on the streets to get your exercise, you gotta go a long way to get, go to a facility to have exercise and things in this community and it's needed. And I, I, I am for pro college, KCK Community College. I am not a graduate of it, uh obviously, but I am in support of it happening here.
More shoppers too, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
But that's not my real reason.
All right, anyone else want to speak to this case? All right, seeing none, well, let me check online real quick. Seeing no one online, we'll go ahead and go to Director Han and get his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Planner, again, we got a master plan amendment and uh preliminary plan review uh for the downtown campus of the Kansas, Kansas Community College. Before you all, this is in the downtown area plan. Before this evening, staff received no letters of support, none in opposition. There are some older notice of eight violations on the property related to the vacancy of some of these other properties, all which would be addressed by the redevelopment uh proposed this evening. Uh, staff does recommend approval with conditions. Um it was noted that a plat or vacation needs to occur in order to vacate the alleyway that goes through the property that's been submitted. We believe that'll come as soon as next month. Uh, and a final development plan will be required um before building permits are issued. They do need another certificate of appropriateness. The current CVA that they required from the Landmarks Commission was for the demolition of the church. And all the, although the church is gone, there is still a landmarks designation on the property and therefore they need a CVA again for the building permits before they can build this project. Um, so we've been coordinating as such between the historic preservation division and planning and this plan review to make sure they're together, which is one of the reasons why condition number three is still there, although some of those conditions have already been met, some of them have not, including integrating all of the materials salvaged from the church and integrated into the proposed project as such. So staff would recommend that both stay in the conditions.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Chairman, we're gonna take the master plan amendment first, please.
Hang on one second, Janet, excuse me. Not from the public, you can speak to him after the meeting if you like. Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, go ahead, Janet.
Um, we want to take the master plan amendment first.
Yes, thank you. So I will stand for a motion on the master plan amendment. Commissioner Easterwood?
Yes, I recommend approval um for the master plan amendment, subject to staff conditions.
Okay, motion for approval of master plan amendment twenty twenty three dash zero two zero made by Commissioner Easterwood, subject to all staff stipulations and comments. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Hmm.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the master plan amendment passes, five in favor and two opposed.
Okay, and now I'll need one for the plan review. Commissioner Easterwood?
Make a motion that we approve plan review amendment.
Okay, uh, motion for approval for a plan review twenty twenty three dash zero four four made by Commissioner Easterwood. Is that a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Easterwood?
Hmm.
Ernst?
Aye, aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of plan review forty four, subject to the conditions and the staff report, passes five in favor and two opposed.
Okay, and which one will go to the Board of Commissioners?
Uh, both of them when will.
Thank you. Both of these will go to Board of Commissioners on February twenty ninth at seven PM. Thank you, gentlemen. We have one last order of business. We need a chairman for the Planning Commission and a vice chair. So I'll open up the open it up for nominations for chairman.
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I'm gonna go ahead and repeat what I did in the previous meeting. Annominate you for chairman again, president.
All right, you said president?
President.
Oh, we're gonna be president.
Chairman, sorry.
Uh, Commissioner Ernst, did you have any, anyone else you wanted to nominate?
No, I was just glad that uh he was picking on you for a change. I second his motion.
All right, anyone else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you all, appreciate it. And we need a vice chair.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Jones for vice president, if she would still like to be that position.
Karen, have I scared you off?
No, not yet.
Not yet, oh, she's thinking about it, okay. She's put me on notice. Uh, any other nominations? Seeing none, all is in favor of Karen?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate your, appreciate your support. That concludes our agenda. Janet, anything else?
No, sir.
Gunner? All right, bye everybody. We'll see you next month.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye Byron. Now he turns his camera on right at the right at this last second.